All right, Parks is next. Ray, where do you want to start?
Well, I'll just do a little kickoff and we'll have our team here because Chad and Jenny are here will probably start with theirs and then when they're done, we can excuse them. And I know that Travis and Dan from the Senior Center on their way. So thank you for your time and attention today and tomorrow. I know it's some long days for the council, but definitely one of the more important jobs, obviously. So we appreciate that. So Parks Department, most of you are obviously will know, but we oversee a number of divisions. We have Parks Landscape Operations, which includes the forestry and then two cemeteries. Revenue Facilities, which encompasses a number of different funds in our special revenue funds. The Menominee Park Zoo, boat launches, amusement rides, Miller's Bay, boat tie-ups, REITs concessions, special events in the parks, and then the Lake Fly Cafe. We have Senior Center, Leach Amphitheater, and Pollock Community Water Park. And then we have Kathy Snell, our Special Events Manager in our department as well. So we'll touch on a number of different areas of the strategic plan in our various divisions that we believe that we touch. I think as the department has grown, I think we've grown to utilize our staff across our divisions within the department very well. We have something going on at the Senior Center that needs attention from Forestry. They know they can call over our staff and take care of it. Same thing at the Senior Center, if they have an event going on or a program, they know they can call us and we can provide them with some help. So I think internally in our division, we do very well. But I think we've done a real good job across the city, working with the various departments. You probably heard this morning when I was listening to James, we worked with them on a number of different projects through Public Works, scooter with our electric division. So I think all the departments have been working very well across the lines. We do have a position in our department that you may or may not know about, but Ann Schaefer is our Marketing and Fund Development Coordinator. That position is shared and it's funded by three different sources. It's through Parks, Senior Center, and then with the Planning Division Services. Ann works a lot with our neighborhood associations through the planning services. And that's a really good connect for our department because a lot of those neighborhood associations focus around a lot of our parks. So it made sense when we had that position to share it across the various divisions and departments. The goals in the strategic plan that you'll hear about that I think are reflected in our operations, enhancing our quality of life services and assets, improving and maintaining our infrastructure, and strengthening our neighborhoods. I think as we go through here, we're going to list a bunch of our accomplishments from 24, our goals for 25, obviously. And I think you're going to hear how we impact the community in a lot of those strategic areas. Members of our team that will be here to answer any questions or help me out through the process. Chad Dolman, Assistant Parks Director, Jenny McCollian, our Revenue Facilities Manager, Travis Dirks, Landscape Operations Manager, and as I said, Dan Brown, the Senior Center Manager, is on his way. So we'll, I think we'll start with the parks because I believe that's one of the first ones from our department in your packet. So page 120 is where I'm at. One of the things that you're going to see when you take a look at the revenue side of our department is our rental revenue has jumped considerably this year. In a typical year for park rentals, we bring in about $30,000 to $35,000 roughly. With the addition of the Lakeshore Park Four Seasons building, we are predicting that we're going to be over $80,000. So more than doubled by bringing that facility in. And that also includes not having our two main shelters at Menominee Park available for half of the summer because of the Pratt Trail project. So our Kiwanis Shelter and our Shelter Number Two, basically were unavailable up until about the end of June, first part of July, which again, we're going to see more revenue from those starting next year. And so the Lakeshore Building, very popular, very great comments from the community. And so I see that only growing. We are renting that building out into 2026 already. And we looked at the calendar this morning for next year, there's only two Saturdays between the months of April and October that are still available. So it's booked out very heavily, a lot on weekends, but we're seeing more weekly rentals. We're having some businesses coming into workshops, staff trainings. So it's getting a great amount of use. But I want you to remember some of that as I get into talking about one of our enhancements requests. Because with those additional facilities and operations, we do have some additional one staff person that we are looking at on part of our enhancements. So I'll go through, again, Parks on page 120, accomplishments from 2024. We just finished replacing the playground equipment and the rubber surfacing at 44th Parallel Park. Obviously, the Pratt Trail Reconstruction Project in Menominee Park, as everybody is aware, has been completed. We did the parking lot and the trail on the west side of Lakeshore Park. Basically, that's right behind La Quinta. And it's a, we'll probably consider it a trailhead where we intend to put some bike racks, informational kiosks, because it's a great access and connection to the Wheel Wash Trail and Heritage Bridge Trail. So that was completed this year. A big undertaking was the updating of our comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, which the council recently approved. And then we have a trail that we constructed out at Rouge Park that basically connects the park to the subdivision on the western end of the city. So number of projects out in the field. We spent a lot of our time this year moving into our new operations administration building as well. And we're finishing up a Pickard Park master plan right now that we've had some neighborhood meetings and will be starting to take a look at some development out at Pickard Park next year. 25 goals. We are looking to renovate the 44th Parallel Tennis Courts and potentially, most likely adding pickleball courts there. Looking to replace the equipment and surfacing at Stevens Park and Rainbow Park. And if the council recalls recently, when we came forward with some ARPA requests for some funding that's still available this year, we actually just received the proposals for both of these playground projects. We'll be reviewing those, meeting with the neighborhoods, and bringing those to the council before the end of the year so that we have those dollars committed this year yet. Resurfacing the tennis and basketball courts at Stevens Park. And then we're looking to hopefully install new electronic messaging centers at South Park, Menominee Park, and the Leach Amphitheater. I think for the parks, that is where I wanted to start. And again, we're here for any questions you might have.
I'd like to thank you, Ray, for this overview. Very briefly, I would also just like to congratulate the department on the great success over at Lakeshore Park and the facility there. The rentals are, they look great in terms of the booking out and how much availability we have left. I'd say it's a success so far. One question I do have is, you touched on this at the most recent Parks Board meeting, Advisory Parks Board meeting, I think would be a good time to, if you think it is, to let the council know, in terms of some of the amusements at Menominee Park and the closure of those, if you wanted to go over that briefly.
If we could hold that until we get into the revenue facilities, that's where those are budgeted. And it's probably one of the topics that we'll be getting. But yes, definitely be bringing that up.
Ray, if I could just maybe a couple of curveballs here. Number one, great job on the South Park redo there. That's hats and tails better than what we had. The question I have is, along the shorelines of the lagoons there, you got weeds, plants, whatever they are growing up, do those come out after a while? Are those supposed to stay there? I'm a little confused of that.
Nope. Those are meant, they're native plantings that we work with. Actually, our consultant that works with our engineering division on our stormwater management ponds, they help us with the maintenance of those facilities as well, because they are stormwater management ponds. It's twofold. It helps keep some of the water flow out. If you have tall grasses and weeds, typically the geese won't walk through those. They'll, they think there's predators and other things in there. But again, it's the natives in it. It also helps to stabilize some of the shoreline as well. So they will be maintained. Most likely, it'll be cut every fall. And then they'll take a look at throughout the year, they come through all the stormwater management ponds, do any spot treating they might need to for any invasives as well. We do have on, along the lagoons, when we redid the lagoon project, we did have opening areas for people to walk in to fish from. And so those areas should be there and maintained as well.
Okay. The other question I have for you, and maybe there's just more of your comments. About 100 years ago, when I was a little kid in South Park, we had a waiting pool there. And it was constantly busy. I mean, it was just overwhelmingly busy. What would be the struggles, the money, the staffing to bring something back? You know, the challenges of turning water over a certain amount of times and, you know, or if someone, like, it could be the Beckett's Waiting Pool, and the owner might want to sponsor something like that, to build something like that. You know, what the dollar amount there. So if you can discuss the challenges or something along that line with that.
Sure. Since you were a child, I think a lot of the pool codes and those include the splash pads and so forth.
Yeah.
There are now, and many have been revised a number of times.
Well, P gravel was good for playgrounds and asphalt surfaces too. But so a lot of the state codes have changed for pools, operations, having lifeguarding staff and so forth at all times, whenever it's open, making sure that it's fenced. I think what we're looking at is the South Park Splash Pad needs to be redone. And I think we can take a look at doing a better and a more modern facility there. Probably not a waiting pool, but things with different fountains and other things like that. I believe we have that in our CIP. Once we get into CIP, I'll take a look. I want to say it's next year, '26. And that's, we put in for about a half a million dollars. And just talking to some of the individuals that we met with, that I met with at our national conference a couple of weeks ago, that might be on the low side, depending on if you're having a flow-through system or if you're treating it, obviously, there's more chemicals, there's equipment and so forth. But again, you're looking at a number of different codes that are in place now operationally. So to your question, I think we're looking at doing a better job with the Splash Pad, updating that. And we're also looking at Lakeshore Park, in that master plan, there's also a Splash Pad in there as well. And I know the downtown renovation plan calls for something possibly in Opera House Square. So I think you'll probably see a lot of those more modern facilities coming in some of those locations.
Okay. There's nothing on parks. Before we do go ahead, you should have the enhancement request in there. And basically, we are, we're looking to add a entry level position. We have a park maintenance worker position that's really responsible for overall park maintenance throughout the system. And some of the things that we're finding that we are falling behind on is Lakeshore Park has really added a lot more. I think the Lakeshore Park Four Seasons building with the amount of use, we have a staff person in there after every rental, whether it's the same night or afterwards, cleaning anywhere from three to four hours after each rental. So when you're looking at having at least three rentals typically each week, and then some during the weekdays, that is taking staff away from other activities and other duties. We are also looking at next year, some of you that have been around for a while, and it was before I was here 15 years ago, there was an agreement between the city and the county and the state that when the Tribal Heritage Trail and Bridge were completed, the city would be taking on maintenance of the Wheel Wash Trail, essentially from UW Oshkosh out to I-41. We have been working on that for years. And I believe that will take place sometime in 2025, eventually when the county is working on, at our request, paving the trail through that whole section before we would accept jurisdiction, which will help us cut down on some of the maintenance going forward. I expect that to possibly happening in 2025. So again, that's something that we will be taking on internally for that maintenance. You know, as far as some of the funding goes, on the enhancement sheet, we didn't have the revenue there, but that's why I point out to you the amount of new revenue being generated by Lakeshore. Again, we're looking at over $80,000. And I'm going to guess it's going to be a little bit, quite a bit higher than that next year, based on the Advisory Parks Board recent recommendation to increase all the park rental fees. It's basically a $5 across the board increase for park rentals. At Lakeshore, we did have them, and they did recommend $50 increase. When we set the initial fees for Lakeshore, the direction we were given was to make sure that the fees are affordable and people that can't have access to the water, have family functions or events on the water. We're hearing it from the people that are renting from us. The fees are very reasonable compared to other communities. We have people coming from Needham and Asha Fox Crossing because it is very reasonable. So I think that we slowly start increasing those, but yet keep it in mind that we need to keep it affordable for everybody here in Oshkosh. So the Advisory Parks Board did recommend $5 across the board for shelters, and then $50 across the board for the Lakeshore Park. So we're looking at generating quite a bit additional revenue there. Staff and I have talked about looking at reducing some of our seasonal staff in all of our areas, just because it's more difficult to find seasonal staff, similar to all the other businesses out there. So if we need to come back with some savings opportunities at our seasonals, we're willing to do that to help to fund this position as well. It's just, we have had a lot of things added, from Riverwalk, roundabouts downtown. And I know we've got some funding for a position for that, but it still takes more than one individual to maintain those areas.
And maybe it's Mark or Julie. So that increase in revenue expectation, is that realized in this budget?
Yes, because we already realized that in 2024.
Okay.
So when I was talking earlier about the fire enhancement, the transparency, me and Mark also had the discussion about, well, should we show a revenue increase in the 2025 for this enhancement? I said, how can you do that when we already are seeing that increase for 2024? But I also was not aware about the park board just recommending that change. So maybe that's-
That part's not in.
Okay.
So that part does not in the budget at all.
I wrote extra facility fees, the $5 shelter, $5 Lakeshore. That wasn't in there. And I think during our discussions, we're like, do you see any more revenues? And it hadn't gone to the Parks Board yet. So we kind of left it at that.
We did bump up our revenue projection for next year, because right now, year-to-date, we're over $75,000. And we did bump it up to $80,000 next year. But I think that's even going to be on the low side, considering some of those increases.
Right.
Yeah. It's really interesting, the amount of rentals that have taken, that are going during the week with businesses having little things. And there's no prohibition in our policies against those types of things. And some really good events.
That's what we built it for.
Yeah, that's what we built it for. And so actually, those daytime, those weekday ones actually help take care of the weekend ones, which are typically the family, you know, events and stuff like that. So.
And again, I want to make sure that people understand, both of the most heavily used shelters at Menominee Park are going to be fully accessible next year. And those shelters are rented every weekend, probably four times, five times a week because of the popularity of those two. So again, just something to consider as you, as you look through all the budget enhancements that I know you have.
And I personally am super glad that you put this budget enhancement in. I think you guys have been running really lean for a long time. You guys are doing a lot right now. I think our parks have really been, we have one of the better park systems, I think, in the state. And that, the Lakeview Park, my family rented it for our reunion. I have no problem saying that's probably the best park rental area in the Fox Valley, if not further. So I do really want to commend you guys for, I think we're really thinking towards the future. We're getting unique park assets. And I would have expected park staff asks to come further years ago. So I have no problem supporting this.
Maybe what you can do, Ray, is you can take a look at your enhancement package and see, because I heard, I heard a couple of things. So that, it was a little, it's a little different than what we talked about earlier. So, you know, with some seasonal staff adjustments, and extra facility fees, and maybe being a little more aggressive, you might be able to pull this off.
Yeah. Like, like Joe, this is one that I circled when I saw it coming through, that it seems like, you know, obviously, we got to find a way to pay for it. And it sounds like we may have a way. But this would be one that I would support including.
Yeah, the seasonal staff is one that we've, we've talked about internally. But again, as we sit down, various divisions are doing okay with the seasonals. We're finding out at the cemetery and some of the forestry, it's been a little more difficult. Chad, on the park side, and I think at the pool this year, and Jenny with a lot of her seasonals have been pretty good. We've had a number of returning. But it's really hit and miss in some of those areas.
Ray, this is going to be a little bit into your enhancement decision. But in terms of the Y-Wash Trail itself, has the county committed to the 2025 timeline for a handover? And I, this comes from-
He's asking in honesty. I'm just sorry.
A prior life where the decision was supposed to be taken in 2024, with discussions in 2023, and it just seems like a never-ending back and forth.
My last discussion with the Parks Director from the county was that there are some of their spirit dollars committed to do the paving. It's my understanding that he has been challenged by some of the county board members to find grant funding to do some similar enhancements in the unincorporated areas that the trail runs through for equity reasons. So I believe he's working on that to try to find some grant funds that will help out in other areas so that our project can get completed. He understands this has been going on for probably 20 years now. And so it's time that we need to pursue it.
Right. And I just, the last time I heard about this was last year's budget of the county. So it's good that there's an update there. Hopefully, we can keep on on that front. So.
Thank you.
That agreement was reached prior to my arrival. So it's at least 16 years.
If there is nothing else, I think moving forward in your budget book is going to be Forestry on page 125. And as I stated earlier, Forestry is part of our Landscape Operations Division that Travis oversees. We have landscape areas in public buildings, public areas that Travis and his team oversee, as well as in the parks. And then all the terraces or street trees throughout the city. In addition, we do have the 12 roundabouts that our city maintained, which were recently completed and look awesome. That'll help us now to stay on top of that maintenance and keep them looking that way. But there's also the Riverside and Boyd Cemeteries. And then for the, I think, the last three years now, we've worked with the bid and other partners on our team taking over the downtown plantings and some of those areas. So annually, the division is responsible for removal of about 150 to 300 trees, depending on the year and depending on Emerald Ashbore and other hits and misses. But then we also try to replace those 150 to 300 trees. We have a goal with the division of trimming a fifth of the city every year, every winter, when tree trimming should be completed. And that entails trimming roughly 2,000 trees throughout the winter months. And we've been able to accomplish that. And that map, I know Travis was working on getting updated and back onto the city website. So if it's not updated in there, it will be shortly. But it will show which area of the city that we'll be going to over the next five years. And it's, it's good for people to know. If we get the calls, we don't have to be very reactive. If we know it's a non-hazard or not a nuisance tree, and it's going to be trimmed next year, we can let them know, we know about it, we'll come out there and we'll take care of it. If it's something else that Travis gets a call on, and we find that it's a safety or a nuisance issue, they'll go out and handle it as soon as possible.
Question on that topic, with last year's mild winter, did we work ahead at all? Or was there opportunity or a reason to? Or how do we normally handle that?
Yeah. I mean, it's, we definitely always try and stay on top of things. With the mild winter, it was also a good time to get a lot of stuff done that we hadn't done in the past. So we kind of caught up on a lot of stuff too. So we try and stay ahead of it. So far this year, we've, this season has been phenomenal. So it's, we're trying to get ahead for this winter too, and take care of a lot of that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I think what, Tech Miller Park, I think, because it was a little, quite a bit drier last fall and into the winter, they were able to get equipment out and take down some dead trees and do some stumping. A number of other parks, Rainbow, Menominee, South Park, I know-
Lakeshore, we went through this summer and took care of a bunch of them this summer. And it's, yeah.
So yes, we try to address those. We may not get into another portion of the city, but it helps us get some of the other projects done that we normally wouldn't be able to get to. So looking at some of the accomplishments, again, a pretty good list for the Forestry Division, planted 150 trees. And as you'll see, we're putting in a number of different species and varieties throughout the terraces, so that if we get another insect or another disease, that we're not having blocks of trees lost at the same time. What we're also trying to do is plant them at different, different years. So if we remove the tree, you might not have a tree this year, but you'll get one next year, the following. Just again, to try to diversify the age along with the species. Travis continues to work closely with the neighborhood associations on beautifying parks and green spaces and doing collaborative programs with them. Again, prune nearly 2,000 trees as part of the program. Travis, you want to talk about Oshkosh North High Communities and the relationship you have with them?
Sure. So about two years ago, Oshkosh North Communities approached me, asking if I had any sort of projects that they'd like to, like that he have them involved or partner with them. Looking around at some of the stuff, I noticed that they had Oshkosh North Conservancy, or what's loosely known as Acre and Acres, directly north of Oshkosh North. And I figured that would be an excellent spot to partner with them, trying to revitalize that, get that into a more user-friendly space. The first year, we had one student that went through and he researched some bird species and tried to figure out what species we'd want, what species we don't want, what kind of birdhouses their habitat, their mating habits, all that kind of stuff. And ended up putting out six birdhouses to, I want to say, I forget what species he did, but put six birdhouses out in Acre and Acres for that. This past year, I had the students look into turning Oshkosh North into a tree campus K through 12 USA, since the city of Oshkosh has been a tree city for the past 43 consecutive years. So they, there's a group of three of them, and they were able to pull it off. So I gave them the four criteria. They made sure that they met that criteria. And then part of that was holding an Arbor Day celebration, which they did at Acre and Acres, where they planted three trees. So it's kind of nice. We're looking, it's a great partnership. I'm definitely looking forward to seeing more improvements and working with them to revitalize that parcel of land.
The other thing, I wanted to make sure it wasn't in here, but obviously, the roundabouts being completed this past year, this past couple of weeks. So 25 goals, again, looking at pruning one-fifth of the city, planting the diversity throughout the city forest, and then again, collaborating with those community groups and neighbor associations. And their next step in some of the beautification that will hopefully be bringing to council in November, that we've been working on, again, with the CVB, the foundation, and other community partners, the gateway entry signs, the Welcome to Oshkosh signs. Many comments about the bases looking, the faux rock look. And so we've been looking at some different bases with the sign company that actually installed those. There's funding available that we've talked to with our community partners. And so Travis is working with them to come up with something, a material that can be wrapped around those stones, making them look a little more presentable as you, as you enter into the city. So changing the look a little of just the bases, it's not a huge cost. And right now, I'm hoping that it's not going to be much of a cost to us, if any, throughout some of the partnerships that we do have. So we're hoping that we'll be able to bring a brief presentation to the council, again, sometime in November at one of your meetings, saying, here's what we're looking at, and get your feedback from those as well. And then we do have one entry sign that was never installed at Murdoch and Jackson. And it'd be on the northwest corner. I believe it's where Kentucky Fried Chicken was in years past. I hate to bring that up just because of popularity. But on that site, that's a city-owned property, just open green space. And because we cannot put the sign in the roundabout, we are looking to have it installed at that, that point in the intersection. So hoping that's going to happen this spring in conjunction with our Electric Division helping us get an electricity there. So that one's currently just in storage, but we're looking to get that one out into public as well. So that's pretty much everything for Forestry. This is a pretty, pretty minimal budget. See throughout, and it's pretty consistent as far as revenues expenditures.
Travis, I just want to say thank you for all the work you do, especially with the Communities Program in Oshkosh North. And Carl and I were there for the Ar跃 operation earlier this year. It's a great outreach program. And I really, really give props to your division for that. Also, just something there, you know, small things I notice throughout town, on South Park, the median plants there, those look wonderful. So thank you very much for doing that. And seriously, you guys do a good job.
Thank you. I do want to just touch real quickly, though, on the revenue sources, because Travis and Ann, through our department, have been successful in getting DNR Urban Forestry Grants for the last couple of years. And you can see in that, that projection, that's going to be two years' worth of urban forestry grants. That should be coming in by the end of this year. So that's $50,000 to help our operations. Oh, and then the last one, I'm trying to think of this, $82,000 in the revenue side. But that's the contribution that we get from the CVB, the foundation, and the Kenzo Foundation, I believe, is part of that horticulturist position downtown. So that's what you'll see in that revenue as well. If there's no questions, if you don't mind, I'd like to jump to senior, I'm sorry, to cemetery. That's also Travis's. And that's on page 213. And that way, Travis could leave us if he'd like. So again, this is for the operations at Riverside and Boyd Cemeteries that the city's responsible for. for. This area, they focused this past year on removing a number of hazardous ash trees, they removed 63 of those. I was listening this morning, and James and his team do help us every year on doing some road repaving out there, and we hope to continue that. We do have our historic cemetery tours that we do in conjunction with the public museum, which are very successful, so we'll continue those. And then, just a small program, but Donna, our secretary out there, came up with the idea of working with the flags that we use for the veterans and figuring out a way to not only get those installed mainly by volunteers, but also having those removed in a time that we can reuse those as well, so it'll cut back on some of those expenditures. One new item, as you look through the revenues, you're going to see that there's $32,000 each year is going to be coming into the cemetery budget. That was bequeathed to us from an individual through the community foundation, and the intent of that is to help keep the forestry, the trees and so forth, at the cemetery looking well, planted. So that's the main focus. So going forward, you're going to see that $32,000 coming into this fund as well.
What page is that?
What's that?
What page is that?
That is on page 215, and it'll be in the gifts and donations, the 4952. So out of that 34,000, 32,000 of that is from a bequeathed amount. Some goals coming into this year, continue to work on the roads and the road signs out there to make sure people are very familiar with where they're going, continue to grow the forestry in the cemetery, and then the repaving program. Again, it's not a huge budget, pretty straightforward. If there are no questions, I think I'd like to maybe hop to the senior center if we could, which is page 157. Sorry, we're jumping around, but this will help some of the staff to get out of here so they don't have to stay all the time. I'm going to rely on Dan a little bit more on this one, and Jenny on some future ones, but they've got some of their attendance numbers, I'll have them share. But for the new council members, the senior center has basically two operating budgets. One is a special revenue fund, the 201, and then there is the 231 fund, which is partially tax levy supported. The 201 fund is really a programming budget where a lot of the senior center programs are budgeted in. It does not have the overhead costs and some of the staffing costs in there, but it's really a fund to give staff some flexibility. If there's a new program that comes along in a year, and it's a program that they can have revenue supporting the expenditures, we're able to have some flexibility to try to do that in this account. So we're going to start with the 201 fund on page 157. Dan, how about if you go through your highlights, if you'd like to?
Sure. So in '24, we've introduced a number of new fitness offerings, including TRX, which is body weight training, and kettlebell training. We've added some new technology, including a large screen TV to enhance our ability to communicate programs and work with our different providers and groups that come through the center. And then begin the process of using digital documents to try to be environmentally responsible where it makes sense, and still maintain all of our requirements to share and save things. And then we're adding, we added some programs around Native American culture and arts, again, kind of some of the timing with what was going on at Menominee Park, and working with some of our other municipal entities to bring experts in to do some art-related things on some pine needle basket things and some art presentations. It's been a real good opportunity for us to really reach out and connect with a lot of folks on that, so. 2025, we're looking to continue to expand some offerings in our fitness and wellness world, looking at maybe diversifying some of our one-on-one or small group training options, continuing to add some specialty classes, both around arts, crafts, then start working on including some things on language, maybe around some other cultural aspects of things as well. So kind of like Ray said, a very flexible way to try some things and see if they can help produce some revenue to help us keep lights on and doors open.
Those new class offerings have been pretty popular?
They have been pretty popular. The TRX class has been pretty much a waitlist since go. Granted, it's not huge, there's only space for six based on facility and other constraints, but it's been very well received. A lot of folks, what is that, and how can I do it? So they've been, it's been very well received. And the kettlebell is a functional training kind of a thing. When you explain to folks, doing some of these things will help you stay in your home, better quality of life, there is a method to the madness, they learn that and they embrace it, and they sign up and continue to do so.
Do they just send it to the way of their grandkids, so they get the exact?
That has been discussed. But I don't know that those who need the right size of kettles.
What's the age requirement to come in, on number?
50 and over, sir.
Give it a few years.
At some point, when you're eligible.
I've been eligible for nine years.
Hopefully, with that.
Denise, did they get the updated? There was, I know, some minor revisions made in the 231. Okay, so the ones that they have are accurate, okay. So the next one is the 231. I don't have a page number, hopefully it's...
191.
191. 192. Sorry, I got to print it off, copy it. So the 231 fund, as I said, this one is about 50% tax levy supported. And Dan, you can kind of touch on some of the other items within this budget.
So this one, more of our personnel and the overhead costs come out of Israel alluded to earlier. Bring this over, everybody, it's kind of far away, sorry. So this one, we, some things that we accomplished, to meet demand, we added some professional health services around our toenail care program that continues to be popular, we see that staying consistent, if not potentially growing in '25. And increasing the usage of digital communications and social media to improve our marketing efforts and strategies. Seniors are getting more tech savvy, or excuse me, those over 50 are getting more tech savvy. And, you know, making sure we're communicating in multiple ways that reach people in the way they need and want to be reached. And then, working on addressing some of the social isolation and engagement with individuals around food and music events to promote that social connectedness and to help them avoid feeling isolated. Again, it's a huge thing where folks come in and they have it, talk to somebody all week, and then they start, can make some of those connections at the center. And then, again, continuing some of our partnerships with some of our community health experts, working on health support screenings, so seniors can continue to get those needs met at either no cost or very minimal cost, just to explore those. And next year, we're looking to begin the process to evaluate what it would be like to have the center open a little more than 8:00 to 4:00 Monday through Friday, because as some of you might understand, those who are between 50 and retirement age can't exactly come visit us during the day. So we're looking at what that might be like and making sure we're going to be strategic and cautious with that. And then increase the usage of some of the existing tools we have, so that we can do some of the things we do, again, from capturing participant data, participant reach out, and then communication, better using things we already have, so just kind of growing on that process. And then working on some additional digital subscriptions to have more of a virtual center presence, because that's something that, again, as our technology-savvy individuals want to be around and do things, it will help them do things at minimal cost to us
Attendance number, Dan, how are we doing post-COVID? I know that you guys were doing good rebounding, but there you had.
Yeah, so looking at the last couple of years of metrics, I went back to 2022, we were just under, just over 37,000 visits total to the center. In '22, '23, we were up north of 44,000, and this year, we're projected to finish just under 49,000. So we're getting to be at, in a lot of our areas, a little bit north of our pre-COVID numbers. So our facility is definitely getting used, and about 55% of that usage is coming out of our fitness building at the north center.
Any questions on either the senior center operating? Yes, there's a 307 fund that may or may not be in your packet, but basically that's a, it's a building fund that Dan is able to tap into for some building improvements occasionally. This year, we expended $3,000 to do a hearing loop, was it?
It's a lighting project.
Lighting project, okay. So he's working with our electric division to do some lighting updates there.
Do you have any issues, you know, next to the boat launch there? Do you have any boat launch issues with people parking over by you?
We work pretty well with the boat ranger crew, and there are some signage delineating that, you know, between our established operating hours in the boat launch stalls, that single vehicles can use that. Occasionally, if there's a tournament, we'll see more boats, and then our seniors will need to park either in the north lot that they're more ambulatory, or we do have an arrangement with Fox Valley Tech to utilize some of their parking spaces, so, and they're very casual and trust our judgment on that. So knock on wood, there hasn't been any issues.
Ray, that fund's on page 251.
251, thank you. So you can take a look at, again, it's the 307 fund. It's been there for a number of years, and again, it allows us to do some improvements to the facilities as the needs arise. We do not have any anticipated expenditures for '25. There is a budget enhancement for the senior center, and Dan can touch on that one, but it really comes down to, as many of you probably are seeing and knowing, but the volunteer community is really shrinking. We're finding that in a lot of our events. And the senior center is probably one of the bigger divisions that utilizes volunteers, and we've continually seen that decline, so if you want to touch on that, Dan?
Yeah, so we rely on our volunteers to essentially operate our front desk, both of our buildings, so that's around 4,300 hours of total need per year for volunteer coverage. And going back to 2019, we've seen the availability and the interest of individuals to do what kind of amounts to a job declining. They, it's typically, you know, answering the phone calls, something you expect a receptionist to do, taking payments, guiding folks around, you know, processing registrations and entries, helping make sure all of kind of the day-to-day things come in, you know, balancing our roles, you know, for taking fees and such. So it's, the number of volunteers we've seen doing that has been declining, they've been aging out, and those that, we've had volunteer doing some things, want to do like the event, if they want to help us out at a dinner, or they want to help us out at a one-time thing, but the show up every day or two, three days a week for four to 12 to 16 to 20 hours, those folks are dwindling, as you can imagine, they work their whole life, and now this, it's a tough ask and it's getting more challenging. In 2019, pre-COVID, the volunteers covered about 3,200 hours of those 4,300 hours at our desk. Through COVID, it's been declining several hundred hours per year. With this year, we're looking at roughly about 2,400 hours of coverage projecting out, which means our staff, our program staff, will have been and continue to be covering those hours, so that we can still capture those payments, we can still give our participants the best service they can get, but that takes them away from doing the primary focus of their role and working on revenue generating programs, or in some cases, working with community partners, or working on personal training and other things. So it does impact our day-to-day performance when staff have to get pulled out of that and put into those types of positions for extended periods of time. So it can take an average over the course of the week from 20, anywhere between 25 and 36 hours a week of staff time away from what they're doing right now as part of what they should be doing with their jobs.
You don't predict that I'm getting any better?
It's only going to keep falling off. Our average age of those volunteers is increasing, we're in the mid-80s and slowly going north as a handful of our wonderfully dedicated folks, and we're really grateful for them. But they're getting older, and their abilities are declining through no fault of their own, it's just the nature of things.
So Dan's request is for creating two part-time clerical positions, 20 hours per week, which would help at the north and the south front desks.
So would that then replace the need for the volunteers?
It would replace partly, mainly some of the need of the staff to be there at the desk, when that takes them away from, like, you know, leading a cooking class, or leading a class on resin, or working with a trainer, and then potentially starts to look at addressing some of these, you know, declining volunteer abilities.
My only concern that I have with that, and it's more of a deputy city manager concern, HR concern, is I've always been, because I've managed volunteers a long time, and you can't have a volunteer do something on Monday, and then a paid staff do it on Tuesday and volunteer on Wednesday, because it creates a labor violation, from what I understand. So that would be a question for our HR department, just make sure that we're on the right side of everything there.
You can be free to leave. All right, thank you. Next one will be our Leach Amphitheater budget, which is on page 226. So the Leach is a, covers most of the operations, a lot of our programming, the rentals that come through, including Waterfest, so that's the majority of the revenue that you'll see there. I think I'll touch on some of the accomplishments and goals, and then Jenny's got some event numbers to share with you. We did this year update and expand the security camera system at the facility, getting some more cameras so that we could see Riverside Park, the Riverwalk, out front into our parking lot area and so forth, so that was completed. Our facility doors, the majority of those, the exteriors of those were painted. The Tuesday Night Concert Series was well-attended again this year, and we're starting to see that we need to start replacing some of the internal components of the concession stand. You'll see that we replaced one of the grills this year, next year looking at grill and some beverage cooler replacements. But I'll let Jenny talk about some of our programs down there and some of the numbers.
So overall, we had a really great season down at the Leach. Out of all the events that we host down there, we only had cancel one due to rain, so that was a really great year. So we had three concerts this year down there. In 2003, or 2023, we had 3,275 people at those concerts. We only had two in 2023 because we did have to cancel one due to rain. So this year, we were able to have all three of our concerts down there, and we had 6,200 people. So that was great, great numbers, great attendance to those. The other thing we do is movie nights, we have three of those, one in each month, June, July, and August. So in 2023, we had 404 for those, and this year, we had 560. Our Touch a Truck event, we, which is fully sponsored, we had, in 2023, we had 2,500 people attend, and this year, we had 3,000 plus there for sure. It was a beautiful, beautiful day, ton of different trucks and businesses and organizations came out to bring out vehicles, so the kids could check them out, take pictures, and interactive things with them, so just a great event for the community that people really love, and we had a gorgeous day, so it was really good. June Dairy Day, we also, this was only our second year, so our first year in 2024, we had 250 people, and this year, we had 600. So definitely a continuing, growing event, and we're finding more partnerships with the dairy promotion group that comes down with us, and other partnerships as well for all the events, to make them free to the public, and still be able to have a good event. Again, we definitely rely on lots of volunteers down there, so depending upon the event, depending upon the date, when it is, sometimes we don't get as many volunteers as we hope for, but we do get a lot, and we really appreciate that, to be able to make these events happen,
Again, pretty minimal budget, no big jumps or anything that I'm noticing for next year, pretty consistent. If there are no questions, we'll keep rolling into the Pollock Community Pool on page 235. So the pool was open for the first year in 2006, so we are nearly, I'm sorry, 24, 235, 234, 235. But the pool opened in 2006, so 18, 19 years, and so we'll talk a little bit about some of those capital projects that we've had to undertake because of the age of the facility. But looking at some of the accomplishments, we do offer a yoga program out there in conjunction with a local yoga studio, and this summer, we expanded some of the swim lessons that we offer in partnership with the Oshkosh Recreation Department through the school district. The recreation- The Recreation Department also supplies the lifeguarding staff at the pool. That's a agreement that we have with the school district and that's been a long-term relationship. They have the expertise, they have the supervisors that are trained in that, they have some of the staff from their school year programs. So it's a good partnership between us and the Recreation Department. Jenny does have Muute Bagel Community Credit Union sponsoring a number of events there. And then the other new programs that we started were in conjunction with the Senior Center to offer some programs in partnership with Dan and his team, and I believe Dan actually did some teaching out there. So, so that's a, again, across division, some of the things that we've been doing. Goals for '25, to expand the, the partnership and the programming with the Senior Center at the pool, looking to replace some of the deck furniture. And then you can see the complete replastering of the, the leisure pool in zero-depth areas. That's actually done, that was completed within the last week or two. Last year, we had to do replastering of the Lazy River and that project was a little north of $300,000. The replastering of the project this year is about $430,000. We've been lucky and fortunate to have a maintenance endowment fund over at the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation. When the pool was, when the fundraising was going on for the, the new pool back in 2005 and six-ish, they had the foresight to raise an extra million dollars and put that in a endowment fund at the community foundation, which we've been fortunate enough to be able to tap into for some of the larger maintenance and ongoing repairs that we've had at the pool. As we budgeted for some of these larger pool replastering projects, we're intending that we are, or we're hoping to be able to get the entire funds from that fund at the foundation. We did become aware earlier this summer that there is a ceiling or a floor on how much they want that fund to go down to. Basically, the agreement states the fund will not go below $900,000. With these two major projects the last two years and what the fund was intended for, we're getting close to that. Right now, I looked this morning, that fund is at about 1.3 million, but if we were to pay for the entire project, we would be at or near that 900,000. Obviously, we don't want to get down in that area because it does generate some good revenue, continues to build that fund so that in 15, 20 years from now, the city doesn't have to come up with that large amount of money to do these major repairs. So it's been a fund for us for years and that's why you're going to see in '25, there's a, a large jump in the tax levy requests for the pool. A lot of that is because some of those repairs and maintenance things, we can no longer be tapping that fund that we've been hitting for years. And then if you also take a look at 2024, specifically down the line items, 4952, 4972. So those include some of that 360 is roughly donations from the community foundation and other various donations. But then at the last Parks Board, we did go to the Parks Board suggesting that we do have funds available from our project, our new park operations administration facility. We do have about $321,000 from that. We did have, from the contingency for that budget. I did speak with the city manager and I did let the finance director know that we're going to be asking the Parks Board their thoughts on utilizing some of those remainder, remaining funds to go into the pool account to help to cover some of that replastering. Again, a CIP project that we intended to fund in other ways, but we were unable to do so. So the Parks Board did vote unanimously to recommend that we do utilize some of the funds from that project to help pay for the replastering project. So those are some of the big jumps that you're seeing in this budget and it really comes down to the larger capital projects that we've had undertake at the pool now after 18 years. I didn't have anything else, but those were two main ones I wanted to point out because obviously they're, they're larger numbers for us. If there are no questions, we can jump on to our Parks Revenue Facilities Fund, which is on page 221. So this fund, and you're going to see a number of pages as we go through this, but basically, as I stated from the outset, the, the projects are the areas of this budget. They're set up as separate project accounts in the 255, but basically it covers the Menominee Park Zoo, boat launches, amusement rides, Miller's Bay, Reed's concession stand, our special events in the parks and then the Lake Fly Cafe. So you're going to see, as you page through, on pages 223 to 225, that's really a cumulative of the, all those budgets put together. What finance staff did is put together, I believe you have a separate report that breaks it down by each of those individual projects. You can see the revenue for each one and the expenditures as well. But just a couple of things that I thought we'd touch on as far as our accomplishments and our goals. Couple of things, at the zoo, we continued to do some paving of, transitioning from gravel paths at the zoo to paved paths with the help of the, the Streets Division. Chad was showing some beautiful pictures or some cute pictures, I should say, of a black bear that we have secured up in Alaska that we're working on getting, working on getting him up to par and then transferred down to our new Bear Fox exhibit, which was completed this year. And that is hopefully over the next month or so, Chad?
Yeah.
Obviously, we need to work closely with a number of regulatory agencies to bring a, a black bear over state lines and so, but good news is we hope to have that black bear later this year. We did put the, we did have foxes in our exhibits and we put them into their new, their home this summer. Jenny, if you want to touch on some of the educational programs at the zoo, I know you've got numbers on those and.
Yeah, so we, we have a really wonderful zoo education coordinator who started last year and this summer it was her second year and we've been working really closely together to just offer more for families to do in the community when they come into the zoo. So this year in 2024, we actually hit 100,063 people coming through our little zoo in Menominee Park, so that's just phenomenal. And that was through Zuluine Boo on the 19th of October. Last year, we closed Normal on September 24th because we had Zuluine Boo down at the Leach due to the construction project in Menominee Park. So last year, we were at 90,457. So we're really excited to hit that 100,000 mark and it's just outstanding, the number of people who come to visit us. So we worked really closely this year. We offered 277 daily programs in the zoo. So this is every single day, usually three programs a day. Usually our zoo education coordinator, she'll do a craft in the morning with the kids. If you ever look at our Facebook pages, she shares a lot of that and it, she just does a wonderful job. She's a retired school teacher of 31 years, so she, she knows all the tricks and all the things. But so we had 277 programs offered with a total of 6,833 people visiting. Usually craft in the morning and the afternoon, we'll do some type of interactive with the animals, like a keeper talk, or they might spoon feed the wolves, or they might do something special with the otter or with our eagle. And then later afternoon, we usually do some type of game with the kids or a tour of the zoo or something on those lines. So it's been a really great year for, for those daily programs. We offer also 12 Wildlife Wednesdays, which brought in additional 1,365 people. Those are programs that we, we contract out. So it might be Bay Beach Wildlife Center coming down and doing a program with families, or it might be the Thousand Island Environmental Center or Badgerland Reptile Rescue. So those are groups that we bring into the zoo that bring additional animals in for families to, to listen to when they do a program with the kids, so. The new thing we did this year is we had Friday's Craft Times, or Friday Story Times, followed by Craft, so we did 15 of those this summer, early spring and early fall. And that was 382 people that attended those. So we just have a lot of really great things that we're doing down there. And I was also able to get a grant through the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation and we were able to add five new events this year to the zoo. So some of those were American Zoo Day, World Otter Day, International Vulture Awareness Day. So we've just had a lot of great things for families to come down and, and take part in, in the zoo. So we're really excited about the future of, of the zoo.
I think just to highlight a few of our goals going into 2025 for the multiple areas and revenues facility, but I think one is an ongoing effort to work with the Oshkosh Recreation Department, develop new programs that we can host during the winter, winter seasons and other times throughout the course of the, the seasons from that standpoint. Our long-term plan for the boat, boat launch development, I know there's items out there for Fugleberg Park that we'd like to consider for additional launch and Causeway areas to get that launch a little bit more accessible for larger boats, potential parking in the long run. In addition, Menominee Park, as you know, the, the, the whole parking lot project that's been in the CIP plan over the past few years is something we want to consider and come up with, long-term plans for development for that, that can aid in both the boat launch and for recreational parking for other facilities at the park at Menominee going forward. And at the zoo-wise, a couple of items taking place is we've been developing along with the educational programs at the zoo during our off-season, we want to try to offer some outreach programs of working with either our senior center or other people that can't come out to see us at different times throughout the course of the season, to keep the interest in the zoo and also get our educational ambassador animals out for exposure for other residents to take place or school groups. In addition, with, with the zoo, as we know, we've been on a three-year cycle or a two-year cycle right now of updoing the paths down there to get away from the gravel. And then we have one more section that's currently asphalt, but in very poor condition that we want to reconstruct between our entrance along the east side of the trail to have a full loop. This year is our first year that we've actually offered, starting October 14th, of opening up weekdays from 10 to, 10 to 2, Monday through Friday in the fall, and I'd like to continue that through the winter. We think it does well for the facility, for animals to continue seeing people throughout the course of the season, keeping our staff on T, on cue for items that are taking place. I think the only challenge it poses once a while is snow, snow removal and we'll look at those situations as they come throughout the course of the winter. But looking forward to having the zoo accessible to our, our patrons here throughout the course of the winter months as well. So that'll hopefully enhance our numbers for the zoo going forward, plus with the new addition of the bear. And as Ray mentioned before, with our fox exhibit, we did transfer over our current fox, but we did receive two other young males that are there in the exhibit that we're working on introducing right now. So it's been a great addition to the zoo down there, so.
So we're not going to go through each of these project areas, but as you look through them, you should see that I believe they all have revenues that cover or exceed their expenditures. I don't think there was anything that I, I saw in there that did not. Yep, Councilmember Foam brought up. Discussion we had at the Advisory Parks Board last month is taking a look at our amusement area, basically having the train and the water rides that we have available currently. And Jenny and Chad and their staff took a look at the operations the last couple of years. We are not covering our costs there. And part of another problem is we're looking at a considerable capital cost for replacing much of the railroad tie, but also if you've driven down there lately, there's a, an old shed basically, or a, a building that we park the train in every night for security and, and everything else. That is darn near falling down, so we need to have something else built there. Looking at all the improvements that we would have to do, we're estimating about $50,000 to get that area up and running and we're not covering our operating costs. Taking a look at the water rides, the lagoons where most of the water rides take place is heavily infestedated, or not infestedated, but has a lot of lily pads early in the year. So typically by July 1-ish, as you probably see when you drive by, the lily pads are overtaking that lagoon, which reduces any of the rentals for the, the boats and, and the paddle boats and things that we have out there. One, they, they don't go through that stuff well and as Jenny tells us, you don't want to be falling down and trying to get back out of those, so. And those aren't things that the DNR will allow us to treat because they, you know, it's not invasive weed or anything like that. So there's a number of things that we looked at, brought it to the Parks Board and it was a consensus of the board. It was, it's a tough decision and it's a reluctance-y, but in our budget going into next year, we no longer have the amusement rides at Menominee Park. We do have the self-service kayak kiosks, the one that's at Miller's Bay, and we can look to expand those in the future. So we do have stand-up paddle boards and kayaks available, depending what happens with the future of the Menominee Park beach house. We've talked about if that takes place, that we could look for some additional rentals of stand-up paddle boards, kayaks and some things down there. But we just took a look at it and not being able to cover our, our costs, it's getting very difficult to run that business.
Everybody's looking at me.
No, I, I think you and I are thinking the same thing, like I, I want to respect the, the work of the Parks Board and the Parks Department, but boy, that's a big loss to the community, just not to have that option available. I, I understand it, I'm just digesting right now.
What year was that train that we bought?
I believe the entire amusements came in in 1980. It was, I want to say 2003 or 2000 that was purchased by the city?
2002.
2002 is when the city took over operations from a, the contractor that was there and bought the system out for all the amusements.
I'm guessing, as we discussed, that the Advisory Parks Board, even that replacement parts are very hard to find, as well as labor as well, because especially for the train, the operators have to be over the age of 18. And considering the fact that's a tight labor market as it is, finding less and less people who are willing to do that, plus the tunnel or the shed where this, this train story needs to be reconstructed as well. So just to provide some context, is that that mean that was not a decision that the Advisory Parks Board took lightly? That was something that was very reluctant, as you said, Ray. We don't want to see it go, but given the state of the enterprise funds and the fact that it wasn't really open at all last year, it really hasn't been since COVID, has been difficult for us. And there are other opportunities we could see there in the future, but kind of the same with, you know, the regrow round that was there a few years ago and now it's sold off as well. So obviously, now that the Parks Board takes any joy, it makes your decision.
And I think the other thing that we did bring up and Mark can speak to this because every year in the CIP, Chad and I would bring forward a request for $80,000 to replace the chain, train engine because we don't know when that's going to fail. We believe that the engine might be from the 50s or 60s.
It's a 1953 Wisconsin motor.
And so to replace that train engine, which our mechanics have been limping along, that could potentially be about an $80,000 expense the last time we received numbers for that. So it continues to, as you look further and further into the long range of the amusements, we're not a bay beach and it was never intended to be that and unless you continue to expand, I, I just don't see a way out of it.
Is there something else we're planning on being able to fill that space with recreational wise?
Yeah, we've had some discussions internally because of some of the special events that we have in that area, the Brew's on the Bay, having some other amenities that would draw people down there, draw families down there. Those are types of things that we'll continue to look into. We don't have anything specific right now, but Chad and Jenny have been throwing some ideas around for that as well. So there's things that we're looking at. There's Gaga pits, there's other things that we could look at doing. You can put, one of the things we're looking at doing at Pickard Park, you can actually put permanent bag toss out there and just like the kayak rentals that we have, you can rent the equipment right there for a minimal cost. You can rent the bean bags or the soccer balls or whatever they might be, similar to the kayak. So something like that might be a possibility for families to come down there and enjoy something like that.
I, I think that would go a long way, being, having, being like a replacement rather than getting rid of an amenity. I have a ton of bias on this one because half my childhood is probably spent on that stupid train, so I don't know if I can speak well and if I want to get rid of it or not. But if we, if we are getting rid of it, I think if we can replace it with some other recreational amenity, it would, would help.
Yep. No, it's, it's not easy.
Sure.
Where, where do we end it, so? So we'll continue to have those discussions, but I did want to point that out to you. I don't have anything further to add on that budget. I think everything else is self-explanatory. I will end up on two last ones for us, some smaller ones on page 271. This is our tree and bench memorial fund and really where, what we do here is we receive grants, donations and so forth for memorial benches and memorial trees. So this is where that funding goes and the expenditures come out. You can see that we are, we're hoping to get another urban forestry grant in '25, so we have that incorporated here. Memorial tree program has been very successful. I don't have that number, but we have seen an uptick in the number of memorial trees that we're planting. Currently, that is a $400 cost. You can work directly with Travis, go out to a park site and he'll work with you on a location and a species. a location and a species selection, similar to benches. However, due to the pandemic, we have not been able to find a decent supplier. You may have gotten some complaints or heard from residents that they waited over a year for the bench. We were waiting about 18 months for the last couple orders that we had. So that's our goal for this winter is to find a reliable provider of those so that we can reinstitute that. Right now, we're taking an interest list of anybody that's interested so that hopefully in spring that we can bring that back.
That's not unique, because I've heard that from other communities as well.
Yeah.
Do you know how much the benches previously were? What were they?
We're at 1,800 right now, I believe, for the benches.
For the program, for the memorial program?
Yeah.
1,800.
And that includes our staff installing it, includes the cost of the concrete. So depending on which firm we end up going with, it could be, that may increase as well, but it'll be based on our costs.
1,800 is very reasonable.
Yep, and that gets them a plaque that they can have on the bench as well. So that's, that fund is pretty much money in and money out. Then the last one, do we have the parks subdivision account? Fees in lieu of?
No.
Okay. I had a tab for it, but that is where any fees in lieu of parkland dedication go into, and then any future parkland development or potential acquisition can come out of that fund. We did recently utilize a number of those funds, I believe, out at Roosh Park when we did the trail. I think we used a number of those funds because we received quite a few of the funds from those subdivisions out there.
Did the, did you guys update the ordinance for that?
We just got the draft from the consultant we're working with, so I'm working closely with planning staff on that. With Mark Lyons leaving, I was one of the project team we're spearheading, so Kelly and I are trying to pick that up. And we're, the discussions we've been having about looking at an impact fee as well as updating the fee in lieu of, we suggest that we can maybe bring the fee in lieu of forward because that's a little easier to look at comparisons and do an update versus the impact fee. So I think that's what our hope is, that maybe by the end of the year, we can bring that update.
Okay, so by the end of the year, you're thinking that?
I'm hoping so, yes.
Okay, cool.
I think that's it for our budgets. Hopefully, we're able to keep you awake after lunch.
Anything, CIP?
Unless council has any questions. For me, the only one that I'd like to update you on, again, it was at the Parks Board this past meeting. In the 2024 CIP, we had $500,000 budgeted for design services for the Reeds Ball Field parking lot complex design. And that project started out at about four and a half million dollars. I think a recent estimate that we got from a consultant based on those costs is probably over $8 million to do the Empire parking lot reconstruction, Reeds Ball Fields, based on the master plan for Menominee Park. Talking with the city manager, we decided we should probably start phasing some of these areas in, take your smaller bites out of that $8 million cost. And Chad and I talked, and we met with the recreation staff because they use a lot of the Reeds Ball Diamonds. And the number of complaints we're getting on the restroom facility and concessions down there, that between there and Rainbow Memorial Park are the two restrooms that are just, we've been holding off on because we have these two larger projects out there. So we took it to the Parks Board in October, and they support the idea of reallocating that $500,000 to let us start designing a restroom concession building for there. And so we'll be bringing that to the council for approval. The Parks Board supported that unanimously, saying, "Let's start getting something done there." We've started to have some discussions about some field improvements down the road, and we do have some CIP dollars that we requested over the next couple of years, and we'll start taking a look at shifting those around, try to get one of the Ball Diamonds done. And then, like I said, just basically phasing it in. So that was the biggest thing that I wanted you to be aware of on the CIP right now. If there's any other questions for me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Before we do library, I should go to the field.
Yeah. You know, we tried to open the door, it might help.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly.
And of course, kick it right back over to staff. We're here with the library.
We're here with the library. Mr. Eshte is here, and library, I believe, is one of the special revenue funds, and it begins on page 200 even.
All right, class, turn to page 200. Too soon? Thanks for joining us, and thanks for being flexible there.
Absolutely. I wonder if this body might indulge me to share some comments before we, oh, is this my?
Either one.
You got to go to there. Just some comments I wanted to share with this body, if, no more than, hopefully no more than three or four minutes.
Go for it.
Gentlemen of the council, fellow employees, any citizens watching, the Oshkosh Public Library has existed in one form or another at its current location for the past 125 years. Next year, the library will celebrate its Quasquacentennial, as they call it, 125 anniversary. Let me paint a picture of what our public library truly means to this city, a community that according to the school district grapples with literacy barriers and like so many US cities, has growing immigrant communities. The library is more than just an interesting building with books. It's a strategic asset and the foundation of our city, sparking new stories and transforming lives one page and program and communication at a time. Imagine a space where anyone, whether they've lived here for generations or arrived just a few days ago, can access pathways to literacy, language, and opportunity. The library is a hub of equitable access, a place where parents and children can read side by side, where adults can gain digital skills to navigate the modern world, and where immigrants and newcomers to the area find both language resources and a welcoming community that says, "Welcome, you are not an abject stranger." Our library empowers people, not only with books, but with the tools to grow, adapt, and contribute. Programs that address literacy, for instance, don't just teach reading, they foster economic resilience by preparing people for jobs and enhancing employability, as with our ongoing partnership with workforce development, leading job training once a week at the library and supporting lifelong learning. For immigrants, the library is often a gateway to integration and acculturation. Here, through our collections and our ongoing partnership with the Winnebago Area Literacy Council, whose offices, at least to a limited degree, are in the Oshkosh Public Library building, people discover English classes, citizenship resources, and connections with local services. Further, as we head up to the climax of yet another obnoxiously unpleasant American election season, the library stands as a civic institution where we underscore community ownership, we build social cohesion, bridging generations, backgrounds, cultures, and yes, even political worldviews. Each time we invest in our library and make a commitment to the potential of every resident of Oshkosh into a city that believes in the transformative, community-strengthening power of knowledge and community space. All of that said, the 2025 budget request from my department, the library admittedly represents a sizable increase, officially speaking from the current fiscal year. Before I do my best to understand and intelligently answer any questions you have, I thought I might do my best to explain my thinking, as I don't want to give the impression that I strode into town thinking that my first official move in relation to the city would best be demanding a larger share of the city's resources. I know those resources are limited, as they are in every municipality, and I'm not so fanatically committed to my line of work that I think public libraries should be given the latitude to overspend their budgets on an ongoing basis. Quite the opposite. The budget I've submitted is based, first of all, on the real spending done by my department in the past, up to the date I started analyzing that spending late this past summer, and trying to project it forward as intelligently as I can honestly manage. As I did that, it began to look to me that the library in the past has submitted operating budgets that were somewhat smaller than what the department would truly need to operate without having to communicate with the city intermittently to allow for either limited deficit slash over budget spending, or for there to be a somewhat complicated series of private fund and endowment backfill tactics that I have to admit have been a bit confusing to myself and judging from the discussions we've had with Ms. Comis, my counterpart in the city. In my perhaps limited experience as a library director, a line of work in which there's always at least a slight gap between what the library and sponsoring city municipality are doing business-wise, the way the Oshkosh library and the city do business is unique and it's complex, and I'm still learning minor details about it literally as they emerge regularly. Something will come up, and they'll say, "What do you want to do about this?" And I'll say, "How did that happen?", and they'll explain it, and I'll say, "Let me try and catch up here." I'm afraid that no real manual exists, and many of the practices are historical and based in what appears to be short-term problem-solving and expediency over time. On this note, the library and city finance have discussed having the library's budget, business practices, and private funding looked at by a third-party consultant so that a clearer picture of what is going on might emerge, and so that any self-evident possible efficiencies might be identified and discussed. As per Ms. Comis, and she may have already said this to this body before we get in here, this effort could possibly be funded by remaining ARPA funds, and that would be part of a larger effort to examine how reconciliating accounts is done by the city, and in our case, how the departments and finance have communicated and worked together. I thought it was important to say to the members of this body sitting here that from my point of view as a newer department head, that the city manager's office, city finance, city HR, and the city administrator have all played very positive and welcome roles in creating a rapport and ease of communication between library and city that I understand was not the case sometimes in years past. Ms. Palmquist and Ms. Edwards in finance have helped to analyze the library's spending patterns, especially in those areas that are not subject to negotiation, like utilities and building maintenance, and helped me to create a budgetary ask that despite its apparent dramatic increase, reflects a budget that can be spent and not exceeded by the department. Mr. Urban is another example, has expressed genuine and understandable concerns about some of the library's procurement practices. There are certain things that we, as a partner of the Winnefox library system, they sometimes act as purchasing agent, that's something that this department- act as purchasing agent, that's something that this department has available to them that other departments might not. Chapter 43 of Wisconsin statute, that part of the law relating to the governing and oversight of public libraries, sets up some challenges when it comes to finding efficiencies within municipality. Chapter 43 naturally puts much of the power, including budgetary administration, over a library outside the direct reach and control of elected officials like yourself. This is how it is in most states of our nation in an effort to keep collections and services somewhat insulated from politics. And the ideal situation is when this healthy political distance is not turned into a moat or a fortress by either the city or the library. We won't speak to that, but it should not be a barrier for a productive relationship between the library and the city. And I think that we're recovering from something of a difficult relationship from the past. In my opinion, as someone who feels the inherent ethical pressure of handling large amounts of taxpayer money, some efficiencies frankly need to be explored to further and closer rely on the library and the city, and I'll give some examples. The library has, until recently, handled a large percentage of its recruiting and HR matters internally to a certain degree. The library and the city maintain separate employee handbooks that align on 90% plus of matters therein, but in some places they misalign uncomfortably. The accrual of vacation is a quick example. And these have created difficulties in administration that could create unnecessary work for people on both the city side and the library side. That's something I've seen since I've been here. Another example, the library is a deceptively large building. It's the largest facility I've yet administered as library director, and most of my library director friends have never had 100,000 square feet of building to deal with. And that can sometimes need creative thinking in terms of maintenance and occasional improvement projects. Historically, the library has maintained a mostly separate facilities management attitude with the city handling the bidding process for CIP projects, et cetera. In the future, I'd like to discuss with the city a way to make the care and maintenance of that building a more cooperative process on an ongoing basis, rather than just when major improvements are needed or major problems, like our recent roof repair, which the city gave us a great amount of help with in terms of the bidding and dealing with the vendors, et cetera, and getting that problem solved when those problems present themselves. We don't want that to be the only time that we're running to the city saying, "Hey, help us with this." City manager Ruloff, the library board, finance director Comas and I have discussed our collective mutual desire to at least make the city and library organizations more transparent and understandable with each other all around, and I believe that this will make the sort of fact winnowing and adjustments that will lead to a better budget, better department, and better city much easier. Finally, the library has an important role to play in helping the city meet its strategic goal of enhancing quality of life services and assets, and we are keeping a keen eye on the quote-unquote "future state aspiration," expressed at the bottom of page three of the strategic plan, of being a quote "cultural and recreational asset recognized as a source of pride in the community. The library already gets very high marks from citizens and citizen surveys, 90% plus approval, but our goal is to regain an even higher profile of recognition and trust for community engagement and public relations efforts vis-à-vis our very recent website redo after 11 years of stagnation and the rebranding work. The pin that I gave out right before I started talking is just supposed to give an example of some of the work that we've been doing, and of course, we are continuing to solicit feedback from the community on an ongoing basis. So I have to thank the city and the council for helping me to get this far, and I'm open to your comments, questions, and rebuttals.
Daryl, I'd like to begin with congratulating you on a successful rebrand. It looks great so far. I know you guys just launched it, the website now, and I'm just very excited to hear your priorities for the library and kind of bring in brought the pressure to the department as well, knowing that there's a lot of work to do there, and so far you've taken bold by the horns and really gone after it. So I want to thank you for that. Overall, in the next, you know, three to five years, do you feel that with this budget that you've presented us, this proposed budget, that you will be able to achieve what you've kind of set out to do in terms of expanding the library's presence and have it improve, enhance it even more as a, you know, a part of pride for the city? Additionally speaking, one other thing that I would mention is in terms of the Winnefox library system, how is overall circulation? I know that may be a little bit more difficult to track now with deep books, but in the past five years, have you seen our circulation increase, decrease, stay stagnant? Have you looked at it?
Well, the effect of COVID on library circulation generally and especially on the library was, of course, there to be a decrease in the circulation of real material, of physical materials and the increase in the amount of electronic materials. I'd say that just in the past, this past year, you've started to see something of recovery to pre-COVID parity. I don't have the statistics in front of me just now, that they had, we had just them from up to one of the council meetings coming up this Thursday, but I think overall, we're it was in about 1% of where we were last year. And that's after a sizable dip and a slow recovery after COVID. You know, we, some libraries have recovered faster, some slower, but our hope is that, I'll speak frankly, when I got here, you know, we did some community outreach and people were pretty frank with me about what they saw as the issues facing the Ashkosh Public Library. And several people said things like, "And that's why we don't visit, we haven't visited Ashkosh for a while," or "That's why we go to NINA these days," or something like that. And so what we've tried to do is to take seriously those concerns that people have shared with us about the usability of the library, the comfort of the library, the safety of the library, and we've done all, you know, in the last nine months, we've tried to seriously readjust so that people understand that we're taking, they're taking their concerns seriously. You know, we've updated, for instance, a patron behavior policy that has made an enormous difference in public regard from what I can see, and the sorts of issues that we face in the building. We've developed a relationship with the school resource officers of the Ashkosh Police. They are an excellent resource. You know, we don't ever want to be in a situation where we're, you know, playing East German secret police and turning people in for the beating library, but sometimes kids who are at school age come in the library and they do things that are a real concern. We don't want to turn around and call 911 on them. This is just an example of the kind of relationship we're developing, but being able to share something with the school resource officers, say, "Here's something from the security camera, here's what was going on, we're concerned about this kid, maybe you recognize him, you talked to him," those are the kinds of partnerships that we're working on and that are making a difference, I think, in public regard. I got an email just this past Friday from one of the patrons who made a beeline for me when I got to town, to basically tell me all of the issues that she had with the library, and then just just as past Friday said, the last nine months have been a pretty amazing transformation in terms of the vibe in the building, and that's the kind of feedback that we continue to count on. As to the question about your budget, I'm going to be frank again. You know, the library that I was in immediately before I was here, despite being a facility almost 40,000 square feet smaller, despite the fact that in that location, the city in fact was directly in charge of facilities maintenance, groundskeeping, snow removal, et cetera, there was not the level of disconnect, you know, in terms of the city municipality. The budget that I was working with there in '22, '23 was when I opened ClearGov here on the first day and saw the amount of money I had to work with, you can ask Mr. Ruloff and the finance department, I immediately, I mean, I had the hives breaking out almost immediately, "What am I going to do?" And was able to have that discussion with the city manager's office and finance to say, "I'm not sure this is a, this is right size," because even in a community of roughly the same size, you know, caring for a facility and a staff of roughly the same size, et cetera, I'm coming into this already on about a half a million dollar deficit. And on top of that, you know, our materials budget was somewhat smaller than comparable libraries in the state of Wisconsin, looking at communities like Eau Claire, looking at communities like Janesville, you know, trying to make sure that our budget is on par with libraries in similar communities and with the demands of a library of that size and with a collection of that size itself at the same time, if that's clear.
Well, that's very good to hear. Then the last follow-up question I have is, I know in previous conversations you had expressed your desire to restart the Friends group. How's that coming?
Oh, we're waiting here, we've got all our paperwork filled out and we're waiting on the final determination from the IRS. We're pursuing a course where it's sort of a, it's a 509A3 supporting organization, which is kind of a special subset of the 501(c)(3), which basically says that the library board will directly have a fair bit of input into the operations of Friends group. You know, one of the difficulties that can sometimes arise with a private fundraising or support arm like that is that if some sort of difficulty emerges between the library board and the Friends, in many cases the Friends can say, "We're going to take our money and go home and y'all can do what y'all need to do." And this is a case where there's ongoing formal communication between the library board, the institution, and the institution supporting, I guess you'd call it, the charity, and that way they never get misaligned in terms of thinking, mission, et cetera, and that's what, that's what our goal is, to make sure that when we have a Friends group, you know, because quite frankly, I don't know that my budget will always need to look the way it will this first year. This is almost kind of a hail mary pass of budgets for, just to sort of figure out, you know. You know, for example, people frequently leave us fair bits of money in their states. I mean, just within the last six months, a gentleman by the name of Bruce L. Decker passed on and left the library, six figures worth of money left behind. We have a fair number of those sorts of endowments and funds. A lot of them are restricted. Just to give an example, somebody might leave us X thousands of dollars and say something like, "Well, we want this money to be spent on some specialized interest area," and I can tell you as someone who's dealt that in his career, it can be, you know, one of our funds has to do with, you know, the materials and programming having to do with, say, the interest of a certain ethnic group. And you'd say, "Well, that is a, that's a noble thing to leave behind," but you'd be surprised how difficult it is to spend X amount of money on anything being published, especially on a year-over-year, year-over-year approach. I mean, there might be $30,000 worth of things published about something in this year, and as the fads pass on, you know, you're scrambling to figure out how, I know it's, I mean, it's such a first-world problem to have as a, you know, as an administrator, you're sort of scrambling to figure out, "How can I make sure that the spending fits within the restrictions of this fund or that fund?" So the hope is that through the Friends, we can start to, you know, have some, a transparent ongoing support of the library discussion where the, you know, we can encourage people gift to the Friends, they can follow transparently the sorts of meetings that the Friends and the board are having, what kind of initiatives do you want to support, and sort of start to de-emphasize those, I'm going to call them restricted endowments or bequests that people often leave to us and say, "Look, you'll be able to be privy to all of these conversations, you'll be able to hear the decision-making, and it'll give us the freedom to do the sorts of initiatives that are going to improve that library." I think we need, for instance, an outreach vehicle. We technically would have the money to go out and start doing an RFP or something right now, but, you know, you want to have the discussions as to what's going to be the most useful, who, Ashkosh Truck is right down the road. Is it the sort of thing where we can have a discussion with them about some sort of relationship? There's, I know it's, it can sound very much like new kid excuse-making, but there's so much I have yet to explore before I can even come back and speak authoritatively about every question that you might possibly have.
I'm liking the idea of an Ashkosh truck, like, vehicle delivering books right now. I'm just imagining.
Well, they drive through town like I do, swing by Jeff's.
Yeah. We get one of their MRaps.
I didn't have this planned, but Deputy Mayor Bulow was at the library board meeting, and perhaps you can give some perspective from your observation, because you were pretty much just observing.
I absolutely wasn't, I was going to anyway, so thanks for setting it up. Not really questions, but just observations. First of all, we now have the position of a council library board liaison, which is already a huge step forward in that. And when I was there, I saw just amazing communication between the board and the new director, which is, which is great, very responsive both ways, very open and honest. And I saw a board that is also very open and willing to not only engage their ideas here, but listen to him when he says, "This is what we need to do with the city." You know, we're in a position right now where we have a new library director, a new finance director, we're going to have a new city manager, you know, so I'm really glad you guys are looking into all the finances now and getting a strong grasp on it, because that's going to be key going forward. But I was very heartened by the communication between the board and the director. I wanted to report that back to everybody, feel like this is the right time to do it. And what are you talking about with the Friends of the library fund and fundraising, very much, you know, echoed there of, you know, how can we make sure it's a positive relationship for all, but that's not an organization that gets to dictate operations, you know, just like any organization, especially with a 501(c)(3) or a 509 or any tax bracket, you know, there's limitations in what money can buy you in terms of access, so just making sure it's set up right, so that everybody has the right expectations. So I commend the board and Daryl for that work.
Well, from a practical standpoint, the challenge was that because there wasn't a great deal of discussion between finance and the library, over the years, the library board simply lived off of the fund balance it had in its fund. And there were various reasons why that fund balance built. It wasn't from donations or anything, those are specifically restricted and those are completely under the jurisdiction of the library board. These were the funds that by law remain with the library board once the council appropriates it, but they were, they were sitting there and there wasn't a good discussion about what their needs necessarily were. Unlike every other department, the library prepared their own personnel estimates and just said, "That's our estimates." Finance now works with the library to come up with those costs. Just as an example, if you take a look at the line item, and we haven't done line items, and I'm so appreciative that you haven't gotten into line items, but I think it's important to illustrate, health insurance, for example, this isn't just a case of one or an extra person signed on for health insurance, that's $160,000 difference because we didn't have the right number of people. And so we were underfunding the library without our knowledge. And so now it's like Daryl and Julie and their respective staffs have gotten together and said, "How many people are on health insurance? Okay, let's budget for that." Something very basic that is now happening because of their collaboration. The other one was, as Daryl said, and I've said it before too, when it comes to our budgets, there are certain things that are non-negotiable, they're non-controllable. Utilities, James talked about road salt this morning. The line item is about...
6455.
See, yeah, utility expense. They were budgeting $83,000 when the utilities are coming in at $140,000. That's not, it wasn't that the library went off on a utility spending spree. I mean, it's not like there's an Amazon store for utilities. That's a real challenge. So they were underfunding in some key crucial areas, and these increases are not to add something that is some extravagance. There could be a legitimate discussion about the second-to-last line item, and that's, it's called specialty supplies, but basically it's library materials. And in that regard, I have to rely on Mr. Eshtey and his experience about what the proper amount of materials, whether physical or virtual, that the library acquires. They were using some of their funds from donated funds, but there's a certain core that should be funded by the city, and then when somebody says, "I would like you to buy extra materials," and I'm bequesting, you know, this, I'm bequeathing this to the city or to the library for this purpose, and they're, whether it's a cultural, specific materials or anything else, but the library board was living off its fund balance and off of donations to do the materials. Those three, right there, pretty much account for the extra half million that they're asking for, but it's really to restore funding that existed for these, for low these many years. So, and I think Mr. Eshtey's experience with a comparable-sized community library, and it's like, how is this underfunded? Well, it's underfunded because we were underfunding utilities by, you know, $60,000-plus dollars. So that's why Ms. Comas and I made the recommendation that we did that this funding is appropriate to restore the library to where it's really been spending all along, but reflecting that this is city support that's going to be needed to make this, make this happen.
Yeah, this isn't make sure you turn off the lights when you leave a room kind of money, you know, this is, like you said, it's whether you want to be surprised at the end of the year by, "Oh, hey, we underpaid, we underbudgeted for that," or, you know, you put it in the budget and you know it's coming.
Daryl, you mentioned third-party consultant. It's no surprise to this hotel that I like those words in a row. Is that in this budget somewhere, is that to be determined, or is something we're talking about? Maybe Julie, you know?
I am working on that, and I actually, since I told Daryl last week, I'm due to send him an email. I was like, "Oh, yeah, I still haven't sent it," so I sent it while he was talking. I want to bring in a third-party consultant to review some of the financial reconciliations, including library. I'm hoping to have that come to the first meeting, council meeting in December. I want to have a quick meeting with the library, finance, and city manager's office, so the consultant can draft something to bring to the council, and then I was hoping we could use ARBO funds to cover that.
Yes, sounds right.
But I want to look for efficiencies, especially with, again, I'm not going to keep repeating it, but with the new library director, new finance director. it, but with the new Library Director, new Finance Director. Library has been unique in the fact that Winifox has been doing a lot of their business services. So getting a good handle on efficiencies, on making sure, the Library is a department within the city. We need to make sure we're recording all of their library transactions on the financial statements for the city. Everything is getting on the financial reporting, hitting the city financial statements, looking for those efficiencies, making sure we're following the procedures we should be following, but also city-wide for our financial, because a lot of our departments have a lot of trust funds at Oshkosh Community Foundations. They work very closely with the Community Foundations. I know Ray from Parks was just talking about how the Community Foundation helps so much. Looking for efficiencies in those types of transactions.
That sounds great. I mean, we talked before lunch about indirect cost plan and a consultant also, so maybe there's an opportunity for that to be last thing, it's just going to be on the table at some point. Anyway, with other departments as well, so I'm glad you brought it up, and I'm glad you brought it up. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I have a question. I don't, explain how, okay, so we're looking for about five, give or take $500,000 more from last year. I'm doing the math here, between the regular pay and the health insurance is $300,000. How do we go, how do I say this? How did we not pay employees $300,000 less than what we were supposed to? If I were an employee and you were paying us $300,000 less, I'd have been knocking on your door saying, where is my money and where are you not paying for my benefits?
The employees were always getting paid. That's not the issue. It was where it was getting funded. It was getting funded by fund balance in the Library Fund that the Library just, you know, they didn't go through HR to get their hires done. They kept very little information available to us. So they were paying these people. That wasn't the issue. The issue was, when it was getting paid, they were using fund balance because we weren't funding their budget to their full staffing level.
How long were they using the fund balance to pay the employees? Did they pay their insurance?
I would say more than 16 years. And I would say, and I, it was...
But he must have been some kind of wizard to figure out how to pay for that all of those years, and now we got to go $300,000 to make up for that? I don't want to cast any dispersions here, and I was going to use a word, but I'm not going to. That's incredible. There's another word I want to use, but I'm not going to.
I will tell you though, Paul, that if you take a look at just the levy, because as a special revenue fund, all that hits our budget in terms of the Library is what we budget as the levy. And if you go back all those years, the Library wanted an answer on what their budget allocation would be in August. So it's like, well, if you want August, if you want it in August, it's going to be what you got this year. If you look at their budget going back that many years, their levy has remained almost the same the entire time. They've used resources from other sources. They've used their fund balance whenever they were under budget, and there was a significant under budget, there was an issue that increased their fund balance several years ago. And all of their donated funds that were restricted that really maybe shouldn't have been used for operating costs, but they were using them for operating costs because that was preferable than asking us for the money.
How did we not get in trouble with DOL?
Well, because we're only given, we've only been giving the Library about $2.5 million to $2.7 million. So we're not in trouble because we didn't hide how we were giving them the money. It was over there, it was off of, it was off of our books.
It was a different accounting.
It was a completely different accounting process. So, I mean, yeah, I don't, I think if you look back over previous budgets, and I can probably just, you know, just go over to my bookshelf and pull out 2014 budget and show you, we were probably giving the Library about $2.5 million 10 years ago, and this year we barely gave them $2.8. So it's, now he's asking for $3.4, which is in line with what their, with what their needs are in their revenues. And there is something with the special revenue fund. They get funds from Winifox, and that relationship with Winifox, I'm not going to admit to understanding, and Daryl is trying to, how do I say it to the Library Board, trying to, you know, untangle the web of the relationship between Winifox and the Library. Now they have a separate Winifox Director. The Library Director and the Winifox Director were one and the same, and so there were things going on that we're not privy to because we were not, we're not the Winifox system. Winifox is an independent system, but they were moving things in and around.
So when did this get ferreted out?
Mr. Eshtay came aboard and started talking to Ms. Colmas.
And when did that happen, sir?
I started in January and started looking at, started preparing the budget over the course of the summer, and it became, I found such a confusing read, I guess you'd put it, that I came to Mark and Ms. Julie and I said, I'm not sure how this budget was working in the past. I'm going to need some help clarifying all of this. Mostly because in the process of putting this budget together, a good example would be the utility expenses, that there was a certain amount in the budget, and I, and last year, you know, I should start here. Until last year, between 1977 and last year, the Library, Oshkosh Public Library and the Winifox Library System, they had the same, basically the same CEO. My predecessor was the Library Director and the Director of the Winifox System. So I think that in a case like that, and I think it's a very unique, I don't believe that there was another situation like that in Wisconsin. You know, as, in 2008, this is, as per my understanding of it, when there was necessary adjustments to the budget that had to be done, my predecessor just said, well, we'll involve Winifox in some of these business practices. They'll, basically, our business manager, for instance, at the Library is a Winifox And that's, they're contracted with us. And the Winifox, for the most part, you know, I think that they do what they do within the best of their know-how, but that's a historical relationship that is yet, I have yet to untangle it. I have yet to make that separation, if that's the way it's going to go. But I would say, if the question is when it was discovered, I'd say when I got here. I mean, because last year, the budget was made by people who were in a, purely in an interim, in an interim role, two interim Directors, and they both said to me that they were confused during the budget process as they looked at it, because it had been a fairly insular process. My predecessor is now retired, the previous business manager from Winifox is also retired, and so there's been a lot of discussions where we've been saying, what does a lot of this mean? And I will tell you, as I've told the Board, I'm not a forensic banker and I'm not an accountant, I'm a Library Director. So a lot of this stuff, I have to freely admit to you, has been beyond my canon understanding to a certain degree, and that's why I've relied on the city's help, trying to untangle it and present to you a budget that I would say is, if one were to follow the arc of library budgeting from my previous life in central Iowa to now, I'd say is more in keeping with a realistic curve of personnel costs, inflation, et cetera. Because as I say, when I started to work with the city's budgeting software and saw the amount that had been plugged in last year, I thought, I don't know how it's possible to run that institution with that amount of money. So I'm trying to figure, we're trying to figure this out.
Well, let me say, God bless you for ferreting this out. I'm serious. I'm kidding aside, I'm dead serious. And, you know, I don't know who applied for this position, but I think clearly they found the right person. Okay?
Agreed.
Moving forward. Now, having said that, a half a million dollars from one year to the next is a bitter pill to swallow. And I was very pleased to hear you talking about, you're new and getting the Friends back together and other avenues that can be explored. You know, are there other revenue sources that can fill this gap? You know, if we're going to fill this gap this year with taxes, can we shave that down or eliminate it through other avenues that you're looking at in the future?
Well, certainly, I mean, I would, you know, going back to the example of the large bequest that we were just, I mean, that all came, that all came through even after I had prepared this. I would say that, I think that my predecessor, to a certain degree, in his defense, you know, for just an example, the materials budget, as you can see, $350,000 is the request. Right, say, if we were, if the city were going to pay for that, that would put them, that's the, that total amount spent would put us on a parity with comparable towns. We have spent roughly that much in the past, but a lot of that has come from private, you know, private sources. What I tried to present here, and it's not trickery, I'm not trying to prove a point to the Council, that what I've put together here is, if we were a purely taxpayer-funded institution, the numbers that I've submitted would be what I would expect to ask the Council for. But also, on the other side of that, at no previous iteration of my job anywhere, but have I had as much private money at my disposal that I have here? But as I was saying, so much of it is tied up in specific restricted sorts of, I'll give an example, $90,000 we have for materials and programming for the German-speaking peoples of the world. You'd be surprised how few things are published just about the German-speaking peoples of the world on a year-to-year basis. We've talked about, can we have polka bands come through? Can we have maybe like an annual Library Oktoberfest kind of thing? This is all for the, but that's a lot of money that's kind of tied up, and I can't really do much with it other than that. If, I don't mean to sound like I'm whining, I mean...
No.
It's great to have that amount of money. But in terms of being able to take some of the pressure off of the city, this, I would really have to, I've been trying to share with Ms. Colmas of the endowment reports as I get them, trying to dig into how much, when did these funds start? How much has been spent in the meantime? And of course, they continue to grow because they're with the Community Foundation. So in a way, this is kind of just like a, what I tried to present here was divorced from all of the private funding that could help to backfill this. This was, showing, trying to show the Council what it costs to run the Library, just so that they would understand.
So like Mr. Eschler's point, if you got an unrestricted $1,000 endowment tomorrow that said for any supplies, you could use that to take it off of this 350, and we would just have a budget surplus at the end of the year?
Because we have a fair bit of funding that are for things like collection improvement fund, and we do spend out of that regularly. I mean, there's, I have these discussions with our acquisitions librarian. But this budget was kind of a, like I say, it was a punt to say, to show the Council, this is, if I were to run the Library at a level that was concomitant with communities of the same size, with what I think the Oshkosh Public Library has been underspent on in terms of utilities, et cetera, this is...
The price tag.
Yes, sir. That's the ask.
Julie, you mentioned...
Just the point of reference, Kami was, I opened the door and Kami had to be the 2014 budget. And actually, you go back to 2011, as recently as 2011, it was $2,460,000. So in 13 years, we'd only moved a few hundred thousand dollars. When you think about 13 years, that's a very minimal increase for a budget. That is, you know, in the neighborhood of $4 million, four-plus million dollars. So that has a lot to do with it. Daryl, one of the other things, and I think this kind of, I forget which one, which Council member asked the question, but in terms of county aid, we can get more county aid if we get more people from the county using our services. To the degree of somebody that says, oh, I'm going to Nina or I'm going to Fond du Lac, to the degree we can bring those people back, that will change the formula as well.
Yes, you know, librarians hate to say it, but quite frankly, there's a bit of, there's a bit of a market for library usages, but even within something like the Winifox Library System, where we are cooperative service, like for instance, the Oshkosh Public Library is the resource library for the Winifox System. So, you know, there's a certain amount of sharing of resources. But the payback from the county and from adjacent counties as well, because through the Winifox System, if residents of adjacent counties use the Oshkosh Public Library, through the Winifox System, all of those things are calculated. When people get a library card, we note where they live, you know, where their home community is, because part of that is the settling up that goes on at the end of the year, where, you know, Winifox System analyzes how many people from Outagamee or County X are using our library, and then they basically send a bill, and then the county commissioners of those counties decide what they're going to refund those libraries. As per state law, they're only obligated to fund it 70% of what's called real cost. And the way that the real cost is estimated is through some formula of the number of people checking out versus your overall budget. So if few people are checking out, the reimbursement is smaller. And that's just an example of one of the reasons, one of the reasons that we're doing what we're trying to do is we're trying to attract more interest from users around the Winifox System, especially closer to home, Winnebago, you know, we've got several good libraries in Winnebago, Nina being another one. And so we're hoping to recapture some of the lost usage over time, as I think the perception of the Library has suffered somewhat because of things that have happened there.
So I, you know, I'm just, I'm really struggling with this. I'm saying to myself, should we call the former budgeting person who did this, a budgeting genius for pulling this off for however many years, and let's continue with that? And then it's the responsibility, unfortunately, sir, of the new Director to come up with, I mean, I think, and I can't put words in as much obviously, but this is what he was doing, and he got the funds somehow to pull out of his fund balance to do that. Whether that was from contributions, I don't know. But as a Council member, someone that's, you know, looking out for the taxpayers' dollar, you know, is it irresponsible to need to go to the taxpayers for half a million dollars when we found, someone has found a system that's working?
So...
Are we doing anything illegal?
On that, not on that note, but in 2019, the fund balance was about $620,000. So the way they've been funding it is they've slowly been drawing that $620,000 fund balance down, and now it's in the negative.
How much negative is that?
So genius, no.
Was.
How negative are we talking?
153.
We're projecting the 153 negative at year-end.
So who can draw from that? Just they can do that without our knowing? I think that's to Paul, right?
Their budget's pretty insulated from us.
Well, I get that, but somebody has to, I mean, some previous Council or somebody must be able to see a fund balance decreasing over time, correct? We didn't just figure that out today.
I don't think they have to share with us, do they?
What the fund balance is? Is it from the LMC or is it theirs?
Theirs. It's their personal fund balance, right?
And it's funded by the Council, funded by the budget and by their contributions. That makes sense.
There's been a lot of, and this is coming from the new person in the room, there's a new people in the room. There was a lot of tension between the Library Board, Finance, and the Library in the past. So when they, when we're talking about budgets, what I've been told is in the past, when Library Board was trying to spend over what's in the budget, they would simply call and email Finance and say, let us override it, or there would be fighting. So eventually, there would be, someone would let them override, because right now the software is, if you're trying to go over what's in the budget, you have to get permission or we have to go to the Council. They would get approval from Library Board, and they would direct Finance to let them go over their budget line items.
I think it's a false, I just can't see how that would ever be allowed, but that's not anybody's fault. We're saying this table is what it is. Well, to that point, it does affect the new paper we got this morning, because now that we know what it is, it's in all of our purview because it affects what we're trying to do on this table and broadly, even though we didn't know for the last 16 years. Now we know it's negative, and now all of a sudden it affects our fund balance in general as well. Because now it's included in a report as of today, which is, again, not anybody's fault, it's just fascinating. And Julie, a follow-up on this, you mentioned a third-party with ARBA funds. How much would that cost, and how much uncommitted ARBA funds do we have ready to do something like that?
I don't know the cost yet. That's why we're having the meeting, hopefully within the next few weeks. We are, for ARBA funds, we are actually completely allocated. However, we have interest, which I would also like to try to overallocate in case projects come in under budget, that we aren't scrambling at the last minute and saying we didn't allocate enough. So on one hand, we are completely allocated with ARBA funds. On the other hand, I know there's interest that I would like to allocate a little bit extra.
Do you have any idea of how much in terms of interest, just in terms of potential over-usage with ARBA?
I think about $1 million. I think about a million dollars.
So, another portion of this, and I know you guys all know this, but I just want to say it out loud, is Oshkosh City Council has been asking for this. Like, so this isn't something that is... Yeah, exactly. Like, this is what we wanted, this is what we asked for. Let's get the right numbers and the right books in the daylight, rather than any accounting tricks or depleting a fund to the point where it's negative before we find out about it or anything like that. So, in that case, I think, you know, like Mr. Esslinger, like I don't love that we have to pay the increased amount, but we're paying what we were actually paying. We were just using this pot of money as an entire community instead of paying for it correctly.
That was my thinking, was that this was an open books approach to letting the city know what it costs to operate the Oshkosh Public Library, so that it could be more realistically seen. It's 40 full-time equivalents, 100,000 square feet, heat, cold, lights, collections, programs. You know, I, being new to town, I would never throw anybody under the bus who wasn't headed to defend themselves. The decisions have... I mean, we're at 30 years anniversary since the addition to that library was built. I wasn't here for the decisions to build 100,000 square feet of library. The way it was done, you know, I think that there would have been, I think that, quite frankly, I think that there will be efficiencies that will present themselves. I don't think that this budget request is some sort of eternal monument to how much it would cost the library forever to run. But it was, I felt time sort of slipping away and the time that I had to figure out the various mysteries and Byzantine turns that business practices of the library take. I wanted to deliver to this body something truthful. That's really what my goal was.
It's appreciated. Believe me. None of that conversation's directed towards you in a recent report.
So I just want to touch on...
But I just want to say again, I went into the offices of the city manager and finance with a fair bit of anxiety. I mean, I basically went in there in a hair-raised panic and said, "We got to talk about how..." And they were very helpful to me. So, I'm grateful for them.
I really do appreciate this sober assessment. And it seems that for the first time, it's your tenure, just basically going to fact find, which is, you know, what was done prior, what can we do better? And while it is not the most pleasant thing out there, it's a necessity to know that this is how much it costs for our library and over time. With the plan that you laid out, it should not cost us much in the future.
That's certainly my hope, yes.
So, I mean, look, I, you know, I, being on the council and looking out for best interest to taxpayers, I do understand the concerns, but at the same time, this is an investment in an asset that is one of our flagship assets in the community. So, I think it makes sense to me. I don't know what was going on with other accounting, I'm not an accountant and I want to know what was going on. Well, I do want to know, but, you know, probably in the context of an after-action report. But I do just want to thank you for coming here today and just laying this out to us in a manner that is just not really sugarcoating anything. This was refreshing.
Yes, sir.
Well, and I just want to touch on one thing and Mr. Flom kind of touched on too. The other service that this flagship building provides us is a social home for a very diverse community.
Absolutely.
And you mentioned that you instituted new behavioral expectations. I just want to know, you know, it's been a couple months, the experience with that, how's it been received by the patrons? How's it, you know, is it helping the staff? Anything you want to share on that?
Yes, sir. And I appreciate the chance to speak through it. You know, when we brought that patron behavior policy forward, a lot of people perceived, as I've said before, that we were targeting some particular community. And I want to disavow anybody listening of that. 90% of that policy traveled with me from Western Moon, Iowa, which is, there's no other way to put it, is something of an affluent community. There are no homeless in Western Moon, Iowa that really frequented the library very often. So, anybody who got the idea that that was the policy that was targeting anyone is wrong. At the same time, the policy was informed by staff. You know, we have an incident report, incident logs, incidents of egregious misbehavior. Sometimes, you know, there was fighting in the library, threats towards staff, the use of controlled substances, you know, hither and yon in the building. And, you know, the staff was saying to me, there are people who went through periods when they didn't know when to come to work, they were nervous about it, that there were incidents where people had had these kinds of issues. By instituting and enforcing a policy that I think lays out some reasonable expectations of behavior, while also offering people a grace to discuss things with me if they've been asked to stay out of the building for a while, to... There's enough room for grace in it, while at the same time making it firm. The last, I'd say in the last six months, there are really, knock wood, is no comparison in the environment of the library versus where it was when I first got here, especially right before I got here. Staff has appreciated it, the public has appreciated it, including some of the residents of the day-by-day shelter, who have said to me, "Hey, you know, before you put this behavior policy into place, there would be some issue with the day-by-day shelter. We'd be hoping, boy, we could go to the library and just leave that behind for a little while, and those issues would follow us right into the building." Now, thank you, those people know that they can't, you know, even people who stay day-by-day are saying to us, "We know that some of the issues can't follow us," because the behavioral expectations, enforcement with the help of the police department, the school resource officers, as I said, the word is starting to get around that, you know, whatever it was that was happening in the past is no longer tolerated with this sort of, I'd say, overabundance of patience that staff was showing before. That, you know, there's no desire at our point to be punitive. It's a public library and there's certain things that just make it unusable for lots of people if you excuse it. And that's really what it was all about. It was about, again, just like this budget, I'm trying to deal in reality in every direction that I can.
I guess I have a couple of questions. Do we, so, in your budget right here, in the revenues, do you have like an estimated amount of money in a year that we typically receive from like bequests or anything?
I don't. And any number that I would have put in there before a couple of months ago would have been an abject lie, because, you know, as I say, the Bruce L. Decker bequeath, much appreciation to the late Mr. Decker, that was almost half a million dollars that was just left to us in one fell swoop. Anything I would have put in here would have been a gross underestimation of that sort of thing. Having a friends group, which, as I say, is coming back to fruition, giving them some fundraising goals, having some ideas to their capability of raising them, it can take some time. But there are a lot of... The Hennepin County Public Library in Minneapolis is a good example. Their friends group is expected to raise certain amounts that help to pad the budget. They have, like if I recall correctly, I believe I'm thinking of the right library, forgive me if I've forgotten, if I'm misspeaking, but they have somebody whose job it is to be like a liaison between the library staff and the friends group. And it's a funded position. And part of their fundraising is, they're expected to raise at least their salary every year and then they raise a lot more money. And they're able to do a good... Hennepin County Public Library is nationally famous. I mean, it's an excellent library system and a lot of their funding comes from organized, usable, private donations that are solicited on an ongoing basis for certain initiatives. Our library does that too, I want to make that clear. You know, a lot of the endowments are, there's an expectation, you know, $6,000 is going to go to, you know, the various reading challenges every year, and that's privately funded. So, there's a lot of private funding that's going on. I would like to make it so that they're predictable enough that anything I presented to this council was as close to accurate as possible. Because I've got a kind of a thing about that. I mean, maybe like a neuro... We'll call it a neurosis. You know, like when I started putting this budget together, I really had lots of conversations with mentors, whatever. And their advice to me was, "Just tell these people the truth. Put together a truthful budget, get help from the other honest people in the city." And I'm not implying anyone's dishonest. I'm saying, from the other people in the city who see what you're trying to do and move forward from there and have this discussion and be unguarded.
And the only reason I ask, I mean, could we be incredibly conservative in some regard and put in... I know that at the end of the year, if you don't go over this budget, I mean, the money comes back, right? But I mean, is there a revenue source we could put in there that's very conservative, that says, "We think we're going to get this amount of money in endowments over the year and that can help reduce the overall budget just a little"? I mean...
Sure. I think that a discussion could be had between, you know, I think the board is open to those discussions, I think, you know, in discussing it with the board. You know, I think that if there was the relationship between the city and the board, where the city would say something like, you know, "Out of these private endowments, some expected amount would be going towards the budgetary, you know, sustaining of the library," I think they would be open to that. And I certainly think that if the, and I hate to speak for them, none of them here, but I think that if they perceive that the city, in terms of the levy, is approaching the library with some realistic... I don't know that they necessarily blame the city for the relatively flat funding that they've had since 2011. I've tried to explain to them that the city has made clear to me, some of the lack of transparency on the library's part was why the city was nervous about doing anything with the levy. Like, if you're not willing to be fully transparent, there's a fair bit of exposure for the city with, you know, if the library is doing something, even if it's not purposely... Well, I feel like I'm digging a grave with my mouth here.
You have to think so carefully.
I know. I feel like I'm digging a career grave with my mouth here. What I'm trying to say is, I think that the, I think the conversation that we had and the board understood that in terms of the levy and the amount of funding that the library is getting from the city, I think that, I'm saying that I think there's middle ground.
Sure. And I would really like to, like, reward good behavior. I don't know if that's a good way to put it, but I really like trying to get the city and the library on the same page. I would really like us to be open on both sides and I think that's going to be really good moving forward. But I think DePaul kind of alluded, this is a big chunk. If there's just any number we can put in it that says, you know, "I think we're going to get $50,000." I have no idea what that number's going to be. "I think we're going to get $100,000." And it can kind of offset that 5.2.
I was just going to point out that this library budget is still not balanced. We're still showing a $50,000 deficit for 2025. However, what you're referring to, I think, is on line 4952, gifts and donations on page 202, we did put in $100,000. What the city has done with those trust funds in the past is, we do have a separate fund for all the trusts, where we maintain and we show the balances. As the departments draw down, we would transfer the money into that corresponding fund. We have showed as a gift and donation. So, we did put in estimate of $100,000 of drawdowns from those trust funds. Could that be increased? I think maybe. I just, right now, we knew we were going to go through this conversation, so we had put in $100,000 for now.
Sure. And then, second question, I have no idea what the legality behind, like, getting endowments to not be so particular. I know that person is probably past or it's in some sort of trust. Is there like a next of kin situation or is there any legal avenue to say, "Hey, we don't have to spend enough polka bands, we can now spend it out"?
We've looked into it. We have discussed that. But a lot of these restricted things, these restricted endowments were left 50, 60, 70 years ago, you know, and, you know, there's still a certain supply of the money that, you know, that becomes spendable for us. And then we have, I think that there's had been in the past a necessary, I think money was necessary left on the table because it wasn't always, you weren't able to necessarily find or spend. Well, you know, for instance, one of the accounts is books. Apparently, there was somebody who once worked for the library who, like myself, was from South back in the time when the phrase "New South" still meant something.
Okay.
And they left and said, "Oh, we want this to be about, you know, X number of dollars' worth of books purchased about the emergence of the New South every year." That's not, I mean, that was about 10 years in the 80s where that was even kind of at 70s, 80s. Nobody's really, we do find, I saw that there was one on the new nonfiction show the other day, so somebody out there still writing about Southern culture in the modern world or whatever. But it's not the thing that it once was. And so, a lot of the times, this money just kind of sits there and you really have to get creative about, what can we fit into that? And otherwise, a year goes by, there's $1,800, we couldn't do anything.
Well, that's really the, one of the goals of the like friends groups and stuff like that is donor education of, "If you are generous enough to leave us this money, can you please write it this way, so that the library has the maximum flexibility to make sure we get what you want as a donor, but also to make sure we can get what you want?"
And it's sort of, and it's sort of a known problem. When I was in Iowa, they had a gentleman who had been an agricultural professor, he passed on and left Iowa, $4,500 or something about the cultivation of lilies. He couldn't find $4,500 worth of materials about the cultivation of lilies. So, we actually ended up contacting the family, thank, you know, thank goodness to everybody still. We ended up putting in bottle-filling water fountains in the library. Like, it's that sort of thing. But when you come up on a restricted fund that's been there since the 60s and it's very hard to find anybody who might still be around or knew the, you know, it can be a challenge. And I don't mean to complain in the face of generosity. People leave this money because they care about the library. But, you know, restricted endowments are a challenge for institutions.
Yeah. Well, thank you for the work you've done. Those are my only two questions.
If anyone, is there anything? I appreciate your time.
I think we framed it.
I think we put the name books on, bookends of it. All right. So it's 3:03 now. Do we want to just go seven minutes and come back at 3:10 and start with please?
Sure.
Work delivery. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darryl.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website.
Budget workshop with Common Council, October 28th.
Well, as you know, I'm Chief Smith, I'm going to introduce some of my staff that's here. My new Kang is my office and business manager, she's really the brains behind the financial side of my operations, she's the one that makes all this stuff work, and she, she makes me look good when it comes to dollars and cents, and I appreciate her very much. In the back row, I have Captain Harris, who's in charge of operations patrol, I have Captain Sholvis, who's in charge of administration, and I have Captain Becky Kaiser, who's in charge of investigations. It's Becky's folks that were very, very good last week, and she.
Did they?
Yeah.
I told them the real amount.
Oh, yeah.
They were quite pleased.
I just handed her a bunch of checks for a half a million dollars, in case she didn't know.
And I came back.
They didn't take it on the mobile app though, did they? She didn't take a picture of those checks.
So, we're going to discuss the police operating budget, we're beginning on page 80, to help you get there. And again, thank you for the opportunity to meet with you to discuss the police department's proposed operating budget for 2025. I'd like to highlight some of the initiatives that we've accomplished over, or are working on in 2024. Our staff development is incredibly important, especially in these challenging times. Training our police officers and our leadership on the best practices of law enforcement is at the forefront of the work that we do administratively. By planning for training in the coming year, we were able to prepare our officers with the best tools available in law enforcement. This in turn provides the most professional police officers that we can for the citizens and the visitors of the city of Oshkosh. The department's strategic plans are training based on the needs facing the department each year. There's several mandatory trainings that we must perform in order to meet the mission of law enforcement in the community. Some of the topics that we are training on include de-escalation, implicit bias training, use of force, crisis intervention, response to mental illness, as well as professional communication. In addition, we have other skills training needs that we must provide in order to provide a professional law enforcement agency. These needs include instructor development, field training officer, CPR instructor development, crisis negotiator, firearms instructors, SWAT training, hostage negotiated training, drug investigative training, criminal investigations, school resource officer training, first-line supervisor training for emerging leaders, as well as leadership training for department leaders. I should share with you that we're all required as certified law enforcement officers to get a minimum of 24 hours of training a year. We provide far greater than that for our police officers. We believe that if you have a well-trained, effective law enforcement agency, you provide a better product, and that's our goal to do every single year. Of course, all this training requires funding and resources that we must provide in order to be successful in the coming year. We continue to have numerous occasions where our officers have been able to use their crisis intervention training, as well as their de-escalation training to bring situations to a safe resolution. In 2024, we provided crisis intervention training to 13 more of our police officers. The department conducted our third youth leadership academy over the summer. This program is designed to bring teens together throughout our community, who need someone to believe in them, just that one leg up, as well as teens who are excelling in their academics together. We bring these two groups together, so you have, you have teens who maybe are in the middle of the road, and they're looking to find their space, but then we also bring high-performing teens with them, and we kind of match them up, and it really helps to develop them as they move forward. This is all designed and managed by our school resource officers in the summertime. They already know the students, they know the qualified, the students that will qualify and do well in the program, and are able to make recommendations. Throughout this academy, we had 23 kids learning about our community, they received leadership pointers from established corporate leadership from Oshkosh Core. They toured Oshkosh defense facilities, they worked with senior citizens at the senior center, to help them explore the possibilities of computers and the internet. What greater resource for a senior citizen to learn about computers than a bunch of teenagers? They organized items and cleaned out the day-by-day shelter, they also learned about giving back to the community through volunteerism, through our community projects. Our academy attendees had presentations on leadership styles, team building and communications, engaging and powering others, as well as conflict management and also perceptions. We regularly received great feedback from both the parents and the students on the impact that this academy has on our youth. If you ever get an opportunity to talk to any of the kids that go through the academy, it's a great environment, when you start this academy, you have a bunch of teenagers in the room that generally don't know each other, and they're really quiet, they're really, just sit in a room, and they, they listen attentively. By the end of the academy, they're chatting with each other, they have made best friends, and we hope that they've made friends for a long, long time. The dynamic completely shifts after they experience this academy. The department continues to partner with the co-edis club on our reading with the cop program. Several times a year, you'll find police officers attending classroom settings in school, or at the Boys and Girls Club, where the officers read with the kids and also connect through simple conversations. We maintain a strong partnership with the Boys and Girls Club throughout the year, supporting the creativity through initiatives that benefit our youth, understanding that we believe in building relationships with our kids now will pay dividends for us later on. These are just dropping nuggets of help to these kids, it's driving, it's dropping familiarity with law enforcement officers, that, you can't put a cost on that, but on down the road, they will remember when they had that interaction with that police officer, it was a positive interaction, that hopefully impacts them later on. Our community closet continues to receive support from the community with donations, fully funded by donations. If you go up into the third floor of the PD, we have rooms that's set aside there that's full of stuff that's been donated, it's toiletries, it's shampoo, it's any type of clothing item, brand-new hats, gloves, coats, that somebody may need along the way, our officers have immediate access to this, and it really helps us out in instances such as those who may have suffered a fire and were waiting for somebody to bring resources to them, or even where somebody is a member of, victim of domestic assault, we have to help them find somewhere else to go. We're able to provide them immediately with some resources that they can hopefully start anew. I spoke with you last year about our relationship with the warming shelter. We've been working with the warming shelter, as well as our homeless population, to help them day by day, as well as balancing the requests of our citizens who have concerns related to our homeless population. We spent one-on-one time with our homeless population, trying to provide help to them based upon the available services. The homelessness issue is a community issue that we all must work together on. You've seen in the proposed budget from the city manager, the inclusion of an officer and half of a social worker to help address this issue. This team will be engaging our homeless and unhoused population within our community, to help them navigate the resources that are available within our community. My vision is that this program will mirror what we have successfully done with our behavioral health officer program, to combat mental health issues within our community. This team will be staffed with both an Oshkosh police officer and a social worker who will be employed by the county. This team will not only provide outreach, but also provide case management to those who actively want help. As I'm sure you're aware, there are homeless within our population who just need that one leg up, the beginning for some change, and they actively are seeking help. There are others within our community who do not want any help, in fact, they just want to live on the street. Oftentimes, this segment of our population are the ones who have less-than-desirable encounters with the rest of our community and violate our ordinances and our laws. These are two distinct groups within our population. For those that choose to violate the law, the district attorney's office, the sheriff's department, and the police department are working together to stand up an intervention program that involves more direct consequences for those who are high-frequency, low-violent offenders. We want to help those who want help, but we must maintain our community standards. This is not a new problem for our community. Last year, I discussed with you the need to begin working with our community partners to develop programming in responses to the various needs of our homeless. We, as a city, have done that. Over the summer, we have been engaging with community members who come from the philanthropic community, they come from the business community, they also come from the advocacy community, here within the city and at the county level. These meetings have been focused on both short-term and long-term solutions to help with the homeless problems we're facing. These meetings have concluded, and during these meetings, it was evident that no one had the capabilities within the city to provide an actionable plan that could be implemented except for the Oshkosh Police Department. As mentioned earlier, we have a model that has worked for our mental health issues. We have experience with the county to deliver support and resources. More importantly, the police department is built on problem solving. As a department that has embraced team policing, which is another name for community policing, we'll be using a tactic for problem solving that was first identified in my former state and by my mentor's former department. To explain this, we'll be using the SAR model to attack the problem. We'll scan to identify and prioritize problems that are concerned of the public and the police. We're going to analyze it, we're going to try to understand the events and the conditions that have led to the problems, and then we're going to respond. By brainstorming with resources here in the community, and choose a response, and provide, at that point, an assessment, which will evaluate the impact of our response. We will determine if our actions have had impact, and if not, we're going to change. We're going to provide an opportunity for those who are doing the actual problem solving, the opportunity to fail, but also the opportunity to succeed. We don't know if a solution is going to solve the problem unless we implement the solution and try it, so we're going to keep on trying. Our officers, time and time again, solve problems, we evaluate what we're doing, what we're doing, and then we move on and become better at what we do. I expect the program to, at the macro level, determine the needs of our homeless population and our competing business community, identify solutions to these needs, and then initiate what they can do, and just as important, report out on those long-term needs that our population says that they need, so that we can impact our community in a positive way. Now, this is just the beginning of mitigating the homeless problem here in the city. We'll come back at a later time, and I'm sure with programmatic needs for the city, understanding that when we, when we stand this up, I want those who are actually doing the job to say, hey, we have scanned our community, this is what our community says we need, and be advocating for the needs within the community. And it's not just the homeless community, it's also our business community, it's also our residents. There's a lot of competing competition for space here within the city, and we have to somehow manage that middle ground to serve both sides of that community. All this work will provide data for us to determine the impact that we are having here in the community. I've had conversations with UWO, who have offered up an analytic staff to help develop data points with us and help analyze the data that's obtained. This will help to determine the effectiveness of our efforts. Included within the city manager's recommended budget is one officer who will be our direct homeless outreach officer. Also included in the budget is the cost of half of a social worker that will be a county employee. This is the same model that we have used for our behavioral health officer team. Last year, I reported to you that as of October 26th of 2023, the police department responded to 552 calls for service regarding homelessness. These are generally two-officer calls, and this equates to 1,104 officer responses. As of October 17th of 2024, the police department has responded to 931 calls for service related to homelessness. This is 1,862 officer responses, or a 59% increase year to year. Of note, the department tries to solve problems, understanding that people sometimes just need help. Of the 931 calls for service, we took enforcement action on only 69 of these calls, or 7%. Of this enforcement action, 33% of these calls were due to warrants that were issued previous to our officers coming into contact with these individuals. The other calls range from welfare checks, disturbances, drugs, thefts, possession of weapons, a robbery, one sexual assault, as well as various other calls for service. Now, homelessness is a problem that's rooted in many causes. I believe that the most prevailing cause of homelessness is mental health and substance abuse issues. Mental health crises occur in our community, and our police officers, day in and day out, do an outstanding job in negotiating these crises. On October 1st of 2021, the department's first behavioral health officer program began. With the addition of our behavioral health officer, as well as a co-funded county social worker, we've seen the quality of responses improve greatly. Our co-responder team through September of 2024 has responded to 1,110 mental health-related calls for service. By having this team respond, they have been able to relieve the patrol officers on 386 of these calls. So, we're efficiently taking patrol officers who need to go do other things, and we're taking the opportunity to put a behavioral health officer and a social worker with these folks who need help, and we're able to get that officer back onto the street to do the regular patrol duties. Talk a little bit about vice and narcotics unit. Through September of 2024, we have had 11 overdose deaths in Oshkosh. This is a 57.7% decrease from last year. I share this with you to say that our community is doing better in this area. This is a success on many levels from many partners, including the police department and the fire department. Every officer on the street, as well as the fire department, is equipped with Narcan. If this were not the case, our overdose deaths would probably be tremendously higher. If this were not the case, our overdose deaths would probably be tremendously higher. Our vice narcotics unit has been working hard to go after drug dealers and human traffickers and have been very successful. I'm sure that you are aware of the work that we did last week, where we did multiple search warrants seizing over a kilo of cocaine, nearly 15 pounds of marijuana, over 1,000 THC-laced vape cartridges. That's $330,000 in cash that was found in a house. And as I mentioned, I just delivered another $500,000 to Julie from bank accounts that we received a court order to seize. Those are all proceeds of drug activity that's here in the city of Oshkosh. We estimate that this one operation was responsible for the delivery of well over 60 kilograms of cocaine here in Oshkosh and the Fox Valley area. This is just one of many investigations that this unit has conducted. Just in the month of September, the vice narcotics unit has conducted 16 separate drug investigations. As a nationally accredited law enforcement agency, we report our crime data to the FBI annually. Through the efforts of our police officers and our citizens, we are seeing an overall 7.9% reduction in group A offenses year-to-date through the month of September. We're also enjoying a 23.7% reduction in group B offenses. There are 33 index crimes that are reported to the FBI. Overall, our index crimes in the city are showing a decrease of 13.8%. Your police officers are doing an exceptional job. If you get an opportunity to see one, you should stop them, shake their hand, and tell them thank you. By the way, today is National First Responding Day. Just another reason to say thank you. As I discussed with council last year, an area of concern for us is the emergence of more white-collar crimes, both in volume and in impact. We're hearing more of senior citizens being impacted by thefts by others who would prey on them. We are also seeing corporate thefts occurring on a large scale. In 2024, OPD has received already 313 fraud cases. We're on pace to have 393 reported fraud cases in 2024. It's a 7.9% increase from 2023 and a 23.7% increase from 2020. An example of some of our larger cases include, in 2022, a company here in Oshkosh that was defrauded of over $600,000 in one case. In 2023, we saw another company victimized by a theft of over $600,000. In 2024, of note, we had a company here defrauded of $814,000. Additionally, in 2024, we've had a case where a stolen lottery ticket was brought to Madison worth a half a million dollars. These are typically multi-state investigations that require many hours to successfully solve. But this doesn't tell the whole story. When we receive a fraud investigation report, we currently have to triage the investigation and are essentially looking for those that have a high level of solvability factors, the low-hanging fruit out there. With the other investigations that come in, we are not able to devote the time and resources to ones that we could potentially solve but require a little bit extra work. Of the year-to-date 313 fraud cases, we have only been able to actively investigate 47 of these, or 15%. We just don't have the staff to work on these. Now we're facing another avenue of fraud that's occurring with ATM-type Bitcoin machines. Victims are being convinced to put thousands of dollars in these machines that is then lost to overseas accounts. In 2023, we had nine fraud investigations involving Bitcoin with $117,000 in cash loss by the victims. Year-to-date in 2024, we've had 11 incidents reported with a total cash loss of $187,000. And as a side note, I'm going to be coming to you later on after we get through budget to hopefully work on an ordinance to try to work on these Bitcoin machines. It's very important to us. It's one piece that we can do to hopefully start to combat these. In addition, there are crimes committed that target our seniors. These crimes include elder abuse and neglect in nursing homes, assault of seniors, financial exploitation of elderly victims, theft and robbery of seniors by strangers and family members. We also work to go after those who would prey on our children. Already in 2024, we have received 24 inanimate crimes against children or ICAC investigations here in the city. This already exceeds last year's total of the year of 20 cases. These investigations are completed as we can get to them. These should be a priority for us to get to. We just don't have the staff to get to them. We're seeing an increase in the use of digital currencies such as crypto, Venmo, PayPal, Apple Pay, and other digital currency apps that are used to further criminal acts throughout the area. This is not just a Fox Valley problem, but this is also a problem throughout the country. We need to be doing more, but just don't have the personnel to get these investigations completed. This will be the second year that you will have seen an enhancement request for an additional detective specifically for these investigations. In 2021, our officers responded to an average of 4,095 calls for service a month, which equated to 49,145 calls for service for the year. In 2022, our officers responded to an average of 4,410 calls a month, which equates to 52,900 calls for service a year. In 2023, our officers responded to an average of 4,637 calls for service a month, which equates to 55,639 calls for service a year. On average, 26% of our calls for service are considered high-risk calls. These calls require more than one officer to respond. Applying this factor to our calls per month equates to a more accurate number of approximately 5,843 calls for service a month. Adding that 26% of calls that require more than one officer to respond equates to 70,111 calls for service a year that our police officers are handling. These numbers do not account for the various requests from citizens regarding neighborhood concerns, our programs that we participate in, and of course, the phone calls that our officers get on a daily basis from folks within the neighborhood. As you know, we also have special needs that occurs, such as the homeless outreach detail that occur throughout the year. I'm now having to force officers in on their off-time to work. It's a detriment to the well-being of our officers as this interferes with their personal lives in a terrible way. Imagine, if you would, having the weekend off, and you have a family event that you're planning, birthday, anniversary, special event of some sort, and your employer requires you to work, and you have to miss this event. This happens often now due to the demands of our staff. I need more police officers on the street. We have no more capacity to take on more projects. Our operating budget reflects a slight increase over the last year due to the needs of the department to fund operations and continue many of our programs that were previously funded by other sources. As a note, 97% of the police operating budget is personnel and fleet costs. And this is just a footnote for future thoughts. The future of law enforcement will be in the use of artificial intelligence. There are so many emerging technologies that are being implemented now and will be in the future. AI will allow us to make more informed decisions quicker and more efficiently. You should know that these technologies are not limited to the prevention of crime. They are also being used by those who perpetuate crimes against our community, on both sides of the fence. To combat this crime will require an investment and commitment to be better than those who will attempt to victimize our community. The use of AI certainly isn't based only on immediate crime prevention. It's also being implemented through a business model to make us even more efficient at what we do right now. I can tell you that we receive over 10,000 open records requests a year to include body cam video. And of those 10,000 requests, that's one request, but there could be five to seven officers on that call. One hour of body camera for a call for service equates to seven hours, where somebody without AI would have to sit there and look at every piece of this video for seven hours and do the redactions of those things that cannot be released. We currently use AI in order to help us with that process. There are strategies being explored and implemented to place safeguards on the use of AI in law enforcement that protects the rights of citizens. We're not just going to willy-nilly go out and do this. We're going to make sure we're going to do it, and we're going to protect the rights of others as we do it. We have many areas that we need to also work smarter and not work harder at, and we're always exploring opportunities to do that. Now, within our enhancements, you see that we, once again, the white-collar crime investigator that I've already shared with you, why it's critical to us, but as a summary, this person will be investigating crimes against seniors, fraud investigations, ICAC investigations, as well as other fraud cases that come in our way. We have a need to add patrol officers. As I discussed earlier, we're simply wearing our police officers out. Our officers want to do well in the community, but they need to be properly sourced. The most recognized staffing model that is a true indicator of the capacity limits of a law enforcement agency across the country indicate that the goal of citizen-initiated calls for service versus officer-initiated calls for service is 65%. So in other words, you call 911, you call the non-emergency number, only 65% of our calls should be that. 35% should be to take care of your administrative responsibilities. It should be to take care of officer-initiated activities, breaks, those things like such as that. We've averaged over the last four years a ratio of 70%. We're over the national standard as to what we should be doing as it relates to staffing our police department. This standard reinforces the fact that we are at capacity and unable to take on more without overextending our staff and exhausting our officers. With the current staffing for patrol, I have to be able to overcome the challenges that I face with staffing. Officers leaving for other departments, resignations for various other reasons, we have retirements, officers getting injured on the line of duty and off, and this happens quite a bit. This past year, we had two officers that were out for concussions. That's a deal for us. That's a real big deal for us. We have to take care of our police officers. We have to allow them the opportunity to recuperate when they get injured while they're serving the city. Officers are taking their well-earned leave time. We have training requirements. We also require military leave that we have to provide off-time for, and of course, family medical leave. Our police officers are just like everybody else. We have family members that get sick. We have police officers who have family members that get pregnant. Sometimes they get pregnant. We have to be just like any other business and accommodate those needs of our police officers. Now, example of the stresses associated with this just occurred this last week. A new officer, due to seniority, was forced to work on both of her days off. Both of her days off. The first day was 10 hours of forced overtime. I, my supervisor, said, you have to come in. There's no choice. Our work is going to be there. You've got to come in. The second day was 14 hours of total forced overtime. And it wasn't just 14 hours straight. So she had to work a shift, four hours. She took some time off, did something in the city, then she had to come back and work other shifts, and frankly, it's because of our seniority requirements, but she's the person that's tagged in to work these hours. The reason for this was due to regularly scheduled training, three officers who were required to be off for military leave, I have no control over that, one officer who was out because of workers' comp injury, and another officer on a pre-approved vacation. And our vacations are approved a year in advance, and I can't disrupt that person's vacation. It's not an isolated event. I regularly have officers that are injured both on and off-duty. As a note, the included enhancement that you see in there, I think in your packet it reads five, I'm only asking for four officers to help us through this problem. So if you can make that correction.
Have the updated, I thought you said.
It's actually four because we took the other officer. We also have an enhancement, it's actually coupled in with the homeless outreach project. The sergeant position, as I mentioned earlier, was unfortunately not included in that. Within the enhancements page for the police department, you've seen an enhancement for both a police officer and a sergeant to work with our homeless population here in the community. The officer position and half of the county social worker is, of course, included in the base budget. The sergeant was cut. I need to be clear that this supervisor position is needed to correct the span of control issue that I'm going to have with this added position. This sergeant will not only be responsible for our homeless outreach officer and social worker, but also our behavioral health officer and original social worker. So we're taking all of our social programming and trying to put them into one window for us to work with. The reason why this is so incredibly important to us is if we have these groups working independently of each other, if we have no management of these groups, if we have nobody directing them on where they want to go or what they need to be doing, we're not going to be providing them the leadership that they need for us to be as effective as we possibly could be. Currently, our behavioral health officer is being supervised by our special events sergeant. He already has every event that we have in the city that he currently plans on. It's a secondary supervisor responsibility that he has. In order for our program to be a success, both on the mental health side as well as the homeless outreach side, I believe that we have a responsibility to provide the day-to-day supervision and leadership for both of these teams. It's critical that we have this. The greatest feedback that I have seen from the community is that we have to do something for our homeless as well as our mental health problems in our community. You're aware that the behavioral health team has been effective, as is evident by the information that I've previously provided to you. We need this supervision to oversee the activities of both of these units, or the effectiveness will be diminished. Our community is expecting results, and I want to deliver. I do not have capacity in my current supervisor ranks to ensure that I deliver the desired results. In proposing the homeless outreach team, I shared a vision with community and business leaders, our philanthropic community, as well as the county, of what the makeup and role of these positions would be. They have committed to funding a significant part of this program for its success. The community foundation is developing funding of $125,000 for three years. The county is funding half the cost of the social worker. I need the city to do their part to fund completely the vision that I have cast. I need the sergeant's position included in my budget. I should also share that projections for parking enforcement revenue are very conservative. It's a belief of both I and my new that we will generate more revenue on parking violations in 2025 than what is currently projected. We projected parking would generate an additional $163,000 due to our changes in enforcement in 2024 that begin later on in that year. As you will see from our enhancement request, the cost of a sergeant with salary and benefits is $137,000. The parking revenue will more than cover the costs associated with adding the sergeant's position to the police department budget. With that, I'll entertain any questions you might have on the police operating budget.
Dean, I can start. Homeless outreach team, just over is where I was part of the short-term and long-term committee, so I've heard all this with other officers here. Thank you for that. I can echo everything Chief is saying. Carl was there too. It was a great discussion, we did it for like six months. Everybody involved in that, I think, believes has landed in a really good spot. We're thankful that it did, thankful that it can be collaborative in this manner, and I think this is fantastic. This would still include a downtown outreach location to some degree. Is that still part of the plan or not?
That is part of the plan, I hope, because...
I know we can't talk about it until we get there, but part of the plan, and Chief skipped over it a little bit, but I think remote location closer to where the help is needed.
Essentially setting up a satellite office right downtown. It's been my experience in my career that when you place a police precinct in the middle of a problem area, it solves problems, and that's what I hope to do.
See, I just wanted to echo that. I think this is great. I'm all in favor of it. Sid, Chief, what you're saying is we'd amend the enhancement request or add the sergeant back to the budget? Either way, doesn't matter. I mean, how do you want it to read?
If the council's wish is to include the police sergeant, then we would have to add it to the budget.
What was on the enhancement crossed out for the enhancement.
We were trying to show what's currently included in the proposed budget, so the items crossed out are not currently included. So that would be outside calls.
One place or the other would suffice, correct? It'll be allocated to the...
I think Julie's position is that it actually has to be added to the dollars in the budget itself, not in the enhancement request.
That's fine. I'm of favor of both, or one or the other, wherever it wants to land. I'm just curious, if we're going to evaluate enhancement to enhancement, I want to make sure we're talking about the dollar amount that's on this page for that purpose. Does that make sense?
Typically, what the council has done is give us direction as to how they want that funded as well.
I do.
And if you want to increase the taxes for that, you need to tell me that. Part of the reason I didn't include it, and I encouraged the chief...
We had your conversation about this.
And because it wasn't directly providing the service, that's why I neglected to add it. Plus, I was trying to keep that levy below 3%. That would take it over. What I also heard the chief say is...
He sent five officers to four officers.
That's a separate issue, but that's a separate discussion that he had. No, but he also said that he believes that we could increase the parking violations, which would completely revenue offset, which then wouldn't require us to do any levy increase. That's another thing that is in that realm of options for funding.
But just on that parking to violation revenue, I know me and my new had talked about items because when I was going line by line through the budget, I had been looking for things that could be increased. We already have $371,000, so the last email I had was that we could potentially increase it by $70,000. Is that correct?
We did a different analysis. I just took the average of the last three months because it was, what is it, April that we increased the wages, or we increased the fee amount? And then we are now fully staffed in our sixth parking control office. And then we are now fully staffed in our six parking control officer position. So taking the data from, was it May, June, and July, we did an average of that, that would be where we would be performing if we kept full staff, six parking control officers working on parking enforcement with the new fee amounts that we have out there, we potentially could add on.
So you think even higher than the 441 that you had talked to me about?
Yes.
My concern with that is the whole purpose of parking violations is to correct behavior. And as people get these tickets and realize they don't want to get these tickets, how many, is that going to drop off? Like, are you...
We consistently maintain the same level of parking violations
Okay.
Over many, many years. And it's kind of like speeding. People don't speed when cops are there. They're still going to park, and they go, "I can take a chance. I might be able to do this." And we haven't seen a drop-off of it. The only time we see a drop-off... The only time we have a drop-off is when we lose staff. Like, you're going to see a proposal coming in place somewhere along, we're working on license plate readers to be efficient at parking enforcement, two to five, because essentially you have people walking around looking at license plates, looking at permits. And we can draw efficiencies in that and cover the city far better by scanning it and using the technologies associated with that.
Sure. Can you, can you give me just a breakdown of what that, the mental health homeless outreach department, like, looks like?
What, which...
So we're talking about a sergeant?
The current state or what I want to get to?
What you want, yeah.
So this goes into what Chris was talking about. It's my vision to have a place downtown, an office space, where these folks go to, and they go to work, and they go right on, right on to work. So using the model that we currently use with our, with our behavioral health team, they actually do case management. I've walked in there, listened to them on the phone, they're talking to somebody who's trying to get into crisis, not trying, they're working their way towards crisis, and they're talking them, they're talking them down, they're getting them to a place that they are better. And then they're also doing case management. "Hey, Joe, you had an appointment, and you didn't get there. Why didn't you?" They're trying to hold people accountable for what they didn't do. Using those models, using that model with the homeless outreach, and again, that's the vision, what I want to make sure is we allow them the opportunity to really set the standard for what we're asking them to do at a high level. But the vision is for them to go out and do the same thing, do case management, go out and find out what people's needs are. And we want to separate those who have a need, a real legitimate need, and can we provide you some assistance? And then help them through that process. It's a scary thing to go to the county's website and try to find something. I mean, I'm pretty good at finding stuff. I can't find stuff on the county website. I got to dig, dig, you're laughing because you know, you got to dig, 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 dig to find something. And somebody frankly who is, who is in that situation of homelessness, they don't have the time nor the resources to do that work. So we want to provide those who want help that opportunity. Now, those who don't want that opportunity, those who don't want assistance, those who don't want to follow the rules associated with the different organizations that are willing to help them out, the district attorney's office is standing up a program where high-frequency, low-violent offenders are going to be held accountable within the court system. The sheriff's department will start to share that information with the district attorney's office. The district attorney will petition the court. So what would typically be a misdemeanor where you might spend a weekend in jail, maybe you spend a little more time in jail. Because we want to make sure that you're getting the help that you need. Sometimes when folks go to jail, it's not punishment. It actually gets them into the system so that they can, they can find the help that they need. Whether it's a help with addiction, whether it's a help with how to live your life, or just what community standards are, if you don't want help in our community, we want to provide a different alternative than you just living on the street. And you violating laws, you violating ordinances. Many of us are receiving a lot of emails from a lot of folks who are not happy with what goes on. I know it. I need the tools in order to combat that. So that's kind of what that looks like.
Sure.
And then we're going to take all that data, and I'm going to work with UWO, and we're going to try to refine this down and give data points so that when I deliver you our KPIs on this thing, we know what it actually should look like. And I think that's going to be important, to analyze what we've done in the past, to ensure that when we move forward, we, we've already tried that, that doesn't work, so let's try this one instead.
Chief, to kind of follow up on that, in terms of an office space downtown, are you thinking of something that's public-facing, something the public can see from the street?
Yes.
Or what's the vision on that?
Yes. And I've actually told Chris, "I'm cheap. I need free," and he's working on that.
We found a couple good ideas.
Yeah, you did, you did.
I've seen and heard some folks that are talking about it. I think people are motivated.
Yes, yes, yes. And that's, that's hopefully the community members who are impacted by this going, "I want to be a part of solving this thing." Each of us has something that we can bring to the table. We act, we, we have the opportunity to bring problem-solving skills and people resources to the job. Other people have the opportunity to provide funding to the job. Other people have the opportunity to provide space to the job. Everybody has a little piece to this. I just need to get all those groups working together, and then we try to, try to start, we're not going to solve the homeless issue. But what I will tell you is I'm probably going to come back to you and say, "As you probably know, we need some housing." But I'm going to come back with you with data that as, as we've talked with our folks and the information that we've actually attained by working with our folks, this is a prevailing issue with actual items for you.
I should mention too, short-term or long-term won't stop meeting, and we intend to use this data that comes from this program to look at further things like more housing or the shelter or whatever else might need to come from it. So this should be good data to start with. And one more point, Joe, to your questions, I didn't have any doubts with the proposal with Dean in the first place, but part of what hammered it home for me, and Carl, maybe you can add to this, but I never heard Molly or Day by Day or other places like that speak to how good a job these behavioral health officers do that already exist. Apparently, it's fantastic work they already do.
I, dude, I read this, and I'm saying, "If you give me another Sepata and Rob, like, absolutely." Like, I can't speak highly enough for the work that that team does.
That can't be said enough times because people are going to question this, and is this where it should live, and is this how it should work? But that's the kind of reinforcement you need because those are the people who need the help now. We're getting it in a manner that's not really funded in the way it should be anyway. But to do it right and to do it correctly, I have all the faith in the world that he will do this. You have my full support here, if you can't tolerate.
So, and, so we're clear on the behavioral health officer team, I could have three teams, and they would stay busy.
Yep.
So I'm, I'm looking at both of these two teams cross-working. They're going to be working closely together, they have to, because they're, they're running into the same people in a lot of cases. So I find, I think we're going to find efficiencies with both of these teams and serve the community even better.
The great thing about this is, you know, when you look at kind of the day-to-day patrol officer, I did a ride along with the department a couple of months ago, and I very much appreciate the opportunity. A lot of the times when a call will come in, an officer will realize, "Oh, that sucks." Because they've worked with these people before, they've run across them, so I'm very supportive of this. I think it brings a good balance of helping people who are actually seeking help and then providing them the message to people who don't want help. So you have my support on this. I like this quite a bit, and I appreciate the work I went into.
Thank you, thank you. I have a whole bunch, so like...
I was just going to say, I, I don't want to half-do this. If this is, if this is going to get us there, if this is going to make significant progress, then I don't want to half-measure. Let's, let's go in on it. And just, the social worker is, is the salary split between city and county? It's a full-time?
It's a full-time social worker. The agreement that we've worked out with our behavioral health officer team is that this is an employee of human services, which is critical because it plugs the employee into all the resources that human services has.
Sure.
And this employee is chosen by, it's chosen between the human services folks and us, you know, what's a great fit? Some folks just aren't good at the street-level stuff, that's cool. But we want to find those persons who are willing to get out in the street and do this work. So yeah, it's a, it's a split between them, but it's, for us, it's, it's a win because we're not adding a position, we're adding a cost of half of that position, and they manage on the other side of that.
Sure. And I'm glad they live at the county. I think the county has a lot of those, like, soft resources that we need.
Well, frankly, I wouldn't be able to tap into those resources without having that connection.
Yeah, exactly. And that's what I'm getting at. I mean, I think they need to be there to have that connection. I think I've always said I wish the county would step up a little bit more, but I think this is us kind of partnering with them, and if we have to take the bull by the horns at this, this moment, then I think that's what we need to do.
I would be very, I want to be very clear. Chris knows this, I fought taking this on the whole summer.
That's why I'm surprised.
I love to be in the police department.
He said no lie.
It's not one day, he said yes, and it was great.
Well, I mean, and the challenge still remains. All of the Chief's misgivings about this haven't gone away, it's just that he's committed to do his part.
Yeah.
The other part is, as he's identifying and he creates data that says it's this percent mental health, this percent drug and alcohol, this percent economic housing-type of things, he's got to be able to take that baton and hand it to the next, the next service. And that's where the long-term stuff is going to have to come in. And, you know, the council gave this to me as one of my goals, and while I agree with this, I think it's barely half the job. Because all these other, whatever the Chief and his folks hand off to next is what's going to make this complete. So it's, be ready, because we're not done yet. This is a good start, but it's not the total solution. And I think, and I think that was why Chief had misgivings at the beginning.
I will tell you basically, characterize you that we're going to basically be the messengers, but an informed messenger coming to you with the data that we, that we collect. And we all love data. We all love to say this is where what we think is good because of this information right here. But even, even if we are at a yes on this, I need to caution you that we're not going to, we're not going to get this thing rolling in January, February. It's going to require time. Even when we get the staff in place, we get the location in place, it's going to require me to, to, to provide then the guidance and then work with human services and work with our advocacy communities to start, okay, this is where we're going as a city. But the one thing that we do really well at the police department is we solve problems. We don't have a bunch of committees. We sit, this group of folks sitting back here, we sit around a room and go, "This is our problem. How do we solve it?" And we solve it. That's what we do, we solve problems. We're very nimble at doing that. And that's, it's a blessing and a curse for us because, you know, everybody knows that good work gets rewarded with more work. And that's where we are right now.
Yeah, I guess just to add my input here, I was, as we all know, was pretty exasperated at the last council meeting. We talked about this. I said, "I hear about this, I hear about this." I was sick and tired hearing about it, and I didn't understand it, and I said, "I hope there's a plan." And I had Chris and Carl come up to me basically after I said, "There is. Hang tight, you'll hear about it." So I'm, and I've said this before, when you have someone at the level of the Chief who is, has the education and the experience, and this is what he's coming and telling me, he needs, I'm just not going to sit there and say, "Hey, you don't need to do this." And, you know, this is something that the folks say they want, our micrositions, they want to solve, so...
And I, thank you all, first of all. I don't want you to lose sight of the other needs that we have as well. The real issue of our cops who are, were working into the ground, I've never in my career had to force people to come work overtime. I'm forcing police officers to come into work overtime. That's crazy. Growing up as a young cop, I was making 19,000 a year when I started, I couldn't buy overtime. People were taking it all up, and they were sucking it all up. We're in a tough place because people value their off-time. They value being able to spend time with their families. And it has, it has an underlying problem for us as well as it relates to our retention issues when we're working our cops way, way more than everybody else does. Right now, a police officer's certification and their retirement is very transportable to anywhere else in the state. So it's my job to create the bigger, better deal. And I have to do that through everything that we do, through all of our programs, our opportunities, our conversations that we have with our police officers, the support that we provide to our police officers. But at the end of the day, when they can't go watch their kids have a birthday party, they're going to go somewhere else. And I've got to provide some of that, I've got to provide some help there.
Chief, can you speculate as to if the four new officers are hired, excuse me, does that completely erase your 2025 overtime budget or not?
No, no.
Does it help at all?
It will help a piece of it, yes. Because of our force-ins, it will help a piece of it.
Because we're seeing actual of 800,000, we'll contribute 880.
Yes.
So some of that will get better if you have four officers.
Some of that will get better if we have four officers, yes.
20 grand, 30 grand, 50?
Sure, I can probably do 30 grand. But I'm, you know, in understanding of, some of our overtime budget is funded through special events.
I get it, yeah.
It's a pass-through coming back the other way. We provided support for the RNC, that's refunded back, or it's reimbursed back, I should say. But the actual cost associated with our real overtime dollars, we monitor that regularly. I get a monthly report on our overtime. We have buckets for every piece of overtime. My new does a great job of giving me a report that says, "We expended 42 hours on a meeting or on meetings." That's an increase of 10 percent. And then I go and I ask these folks, "Why are we doing, why are we expending this amount of money?" We manage our overtime very, very well. But what I don't do is short-change this on when crimes are occurring, we have to call somebody in, somebody's got to work overtime. This, this investigation right here, I can tell you, those officers have worked a lot of time. We're going to spend a lot of money on overtime because of the work that these officers did. But that's impactful to this community. That's what we have to focus on when it comes to overtime.
Yeah, I had provided the Chief with authorization to, to do a soft launch of some enforcement, but it's that situation where he's calling in people, and it was on top of their, their normal, you know, 40-hour week.
Yeah, and I failed to mention that, thank you, Mark, but we actually, over the summer, have, I've been assigning officers downtown just to kind of keep some lid on what's going on because we were seeing the exponential growth of what was going on downtown. And we've had impact on it. Although we are all receiving emails from the community, I can tell you that if we weren't down there, we'd probably be receiving more emails from the community. Our community wants us to do something as a city, and I can't send some of Julie's folks out there to do this work. They just won't like it.
All right, I have a short list, but most of these are pretty quick. Do you foresee a K-9 addition to this unit, like you have with the other unit?
Potentially. But I want, I want those working it to tell me what they need.
Perfect.
There may be value in that.
Understood. Any conversation with the county yet, and if they'll commit to their half fund?
I had a written email from John Daimel saying that he's committed to half of it.
Awesome. And I think he's looking for funding, to fund their half. And frankly, I don't care where they're, if, I don't care if they, you know, take up a collection.
Sure.
If they fund half it, that's good enough for me.
And it's like I, you know, shared my experience with this group, like, the, the two of them working together is, well, in Sepata and Rob, because they also have the K-9, so the three of them...
Yes, yes.
Really is what makes it work well, and just amazing results. One thing that I want to make clear that Chief Smith and, and your team have always said, that the goal here is to never punish homelessness, it's to enforce the ordinances that we have on our books.
Yes.
Because, you know, as hard as it is, experiencing homelessness does not give you the privilege to break other laws. And that's, that's the conversation that we've always had is how do you walk that line? We're not here to punish homelessness. So I want, wanted to say that publicly and make sure that everybody's on the same page there.
And to, to that point, if you recall, some of my data that I provided with you, only seven percent of our actual homeless calls for service involve enforcement action.
Yep.
And many of those were warrants that were already issued.
Right.
So we don't necessarily, we're not criminalizing homelessness.
Correct.
But we are going to enforce the laws, we are going to enforce all of those. And frankly, if people are not, if they're not following what our community standards are, then we need to be addressing that.
And you know, with actions taken by Nina and Fadalek, of course, we get questions all the time. And I've never seen an appetite from this council. I can speak for the council, but to, to take those kinds of actions, that would criminalize the act of being homelessness. So I just wanted to say that for anybody who's watching. During those meetings that we were talking about, the downtown stakeholder meetings, one of the first things we did around county had a little handout that said like, hey, if you see this, call this department. If you see this, call this team. If you see this, call this nonprofit resource. And we, we looked through it right away and unfortunately, the answer for every category on that sheet, on that sheet was, oh, it's OPD. Oh, it's OPD.
Police Department, yeah.
It's called the police department. And so I, I know from those meetings, the goal was not to have the police department be the answer, you know? And that's not the, the future goal. I want to commend you for, for being here and not saying, that's not my role. Because that isn't your role in this problem, but you are taking it on and I appreciate that.
There is no other department within the city that has the capabilities to do what we have the capabilities to do. And I, I understand that. And that's, that's the hard work of those folks. That's the hard work of our, of our, of our management folks in business side. It's the hard work of our police officers on the street. Again, Julie's folks don't have the experiences to do these things. She doesn't have the training to do these things. There's not a department that we have within the city. We don't have a health department. There is nobody else there to do this stuff.
And, and what a lot of people don't understand is if you call day by day, we can get you on a waitlist. If we call EBIT cap, we can get you on a waitlist. We call it the help program, we can get you on a waitlist. You know, that doesn't help the person who's in crisis downtown right now. So that's the part that I just wanted to communicate clearly. I'm going to switch to SROs real quick if nobody has anything else on the phone. Okay. Do, what schools do we have an SRO in full-time now?
Every high school and every middle school has an SRO in their full-time.
Okay. And some of these questions come, I went to the school board listening session and there seemed to be some questions about, is that the best use of the officer? Is that, you know, how does that play out? I just kind of want to get your feelings. The SRO funding, I didn't see anything in here about it. Is it just absorbed in your general policing budget?
The school district pays for half of our SROs during the school year. And they pay for all of their overtime. And the city pays for half of the other side of the SRO.
Okay.
Regular salary and benefits.
Gotcha. And so that's an MOU between?
Yes.
The, the school. Okay, awesome.
Yeah, it's other governmental aid at forty-two fifty-three, I believe, on page eighty-two. About three hundred twenty-three thousand five hundred for an extra. Did I, did I pick that right? Yeah.
Yes.
Thanks, my dear.
And my understanding is that the SRO program has been wildly successful with some pockets of concern.
I wouldn't even call them pockets. I would call some of them misunderstanding as to what our SROs do.
Okay.
Like every organization, we'll have a hiccup. We'll call it a hiccup, not a pocket.
Okay.
And every organization has somebody somewhere along the way that didn't quite follow the rules and we address them as, as they occur. And we, we, we don't throw the baby out with the bathwater every time something happens. We address it, we fix it, we move on. I will tell you that the work that the SROs do in the school is not the traditional SRO work that you may see in other school districts. And one of the, one of the things that burdens me heavily here is when I hear from community members or those who come into our community, is they imprint their impression of law enforcement from their experiences, which is not our Oshkosh Police Department. I would put our police officers caring for their community up against anybody across this country. So our SROs and the work that they do within, within the schools are far more than patrolling. They're mentoring. They're having one-on-one conversations. They're, they're operating with, hey Jimmy, how's your day today? How's this going on? And I would tell you in 2019, there was one of those moments just like that that caused one of our SROs to almost die because somebody wanted to do harm to somebody else. That's the value that we have in our SROs. We have a, a group of officers who, as I shared with you within our, within my presentation, during the summertime, they're taking these kids that need help and they're doing more than, than we've asked them to do. Our SROs are in there to help kids survive school, but also thrive in school. That's what they do. They provide so much more than just traditional police work. But what they don't do is they don't provide discipline. They will enforce laws, they will enforce ordinances, but they're not going to provide discipline.
And that's, that was my next question is where does that, that role kind of, you know, because it's, it's got the MOU, so it's kind of has two bosses in a way. Where does discipline, school-wise, cross over into something that the SRO would be included in?
If, if a, if a school administrator felt like there may be some criminal conduct that may occur because they are going to do something, whatever that is, they may ask an SRO to be in the area to help out with that. Now, are we a hundred percent always right on that? I think some principals in the past have used the SROs just as another staff member, but it's a police officer. And as we, as we have creep going into some of these areas where we interline, go in the, off the road, off the, off the role of the, of the SRO, then we're going to correct it and we're going to bring it back. I am committed to not doing discipline. We have enough that we have to do.
Sure.
School discipline is not in the, in our SRO's job description. And that's, and that's sometimes a misunderstanding with a lot of people.
If they have a truancy, if they have a truancy hearing, we may have a police officer there because there's some conflict going on there.
Sure.
And our job is to keep the peace in the school. Every child should be able to go to school without fear of being harmed.
Sure.
Every person working in the school should go to their job when they're having a fear of being harmed. And that's what we provide.
And then my understanding is the SRO, SRO position is something that would be, it's voluntary. It's something that they apply to be in, it's not appointed, is that, or am I incorrect?
They apply for it and it's a tough selection process.
Okay. And I know there's additional training.
There is, there is additional training. And the, the selection of an SRO isn't just me or my staff selecting them. We work with the school district and they sit on interview panels. We've got to find the right people to do these jobs. You know, I, I often say that, you know, not everybody does everything well. In my previous position, in my previous department, we had, we had a lieutenant that he was super tall, had really big feet, he wanted to be on the SWAT team. He did not do that well because he trips. So I had to, see, you can't do this. People are not suited for some jobs. And it's our job to find the right people to do the jobs.
I'd be a terrible SRO, so I have, I have to know that. Understood. Thank you for, for helping me clarify any questions that I had on that. Anybody else, anything else for you? Okay, so.
Yeah. I don't want to put the council in a position where they, the purpose of these workshops is not to approve things today. You've got a couple of weeks to think about that. But given the lead time that the chief has with this type of thing, how inclined are you for this? Because I do have certain authorities and I gave the chief authority to, to put some overtime on the street. And that was a challenge and he had to back off of that a little bit because he has, they're real people with, you know, real lives and everything. But if you're so inclined, I can give the chief authorization to start recruiting sooner rather than later to get people on the street. There's only five of you here, I hate to put you on the spot, but I don't need your approval, I need your blessing. But your blessing is kind of committing you. So I, I think there's enough strength of this discussion that, as the chief said, I like to solve problems, so do I. And what's your, what's your feeling on giving me a blessing of get moving on these?
I think we should separate the two because they're two different enhancements.
Yeah, I'm only talking about this, I'm only talking about the, I'm talking about the homeless initiative process. And, and if, if you want to split that into, that's appropriate as well. Because Julie and I only recommended the one, but if you want to get going on this, what do you, what would you want to bless? Because I can get going on this.
Yeah, I think we need to get going right away. This is something I, we hear across the aisle from every single citizen we ever talk to.
Every day.
Doesn't matter who you are, they, they want help with homelessness.
For clarity, for me, I'm the sergeant and the, the entire homeless outreach program as proposed, including the sergeant.
I am too.
Yep.
If that's what you mean by.
Yeah, I mean, Paul, did I hear you?
Oh, no doubt, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, I couldn't tell.
So I think it's fine.
You said no doubt. It's like, yes, no doubt, but you said yes.
So I'm getting on the floor.
Joe.
It's no doubt.
I know what, and I don't.
Yeah, that would be.
I just want to make sure.
That was a little more tougher.
Because of the.
Just so we, just so we all know we're talking.
Because of the, the volume of emails that I know you've gotten and I've gotten and chief's gotten, I mean, it's, it clearly is an issue. Right now, it's bubbling out at a very visible place in town. Let's, let's just be honest. And to the degree we have any success, it might bubble over in another spot. Well, that's, that's the next problem that, that these folks will deal with, but they're capable of doing it. But I would like to, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to daily.
I have been pausing, not, not only Chris, but others have been saying, hey, I got this place. I go, uh-uh, I gotta put all these things in place before.
So in other words, lease don't buy in case we have to move offices.
Yes, yes, yes.
And I really like the analytics part of this. I feel like there is so much in this ecosphere that people just, it's hearsay, it's how I feel, it's how they feel. I, I really like data, like data-driven government. If we can really put some numbers down to these things, I think it's going to help us in the long run.
And it's not a focus group. I'm not going to lie, we've had so many focus groups.
Focus groups on this.
This is boots on the ground who are going to be working with the people and be able to tell you, Billy Bob says this.
Yep. And chief, to your point, the last thing we talked about is short-term, long-term was, this is great, we can talk about it for now, but don't say it's going to happen until this.
Right.
But Mark saying that he can make it happen even sooner is fantastic. If I were just saying, then we.
And, and to be clear, that's.
It's still going to take a bit.
Yeah.
I know what you're going to say, but I'm trying to.
On the other hand, I can't, because I can't.
But now, but now what I'm saying is now we can at least talk about it. Now there is a path forward. Now it has been funded and we'll.
The city is working towards.
Correct. Now, now there's an answer to that question, which literally comes up every day.
Yeah, every day.
And Mark, I appreciate you doing that as well. That makes all the sense in the world.
Yeah, again, there's a lot of lead time with this. This isn't getting them on the street.
No, it's not, it's not. So just to kind of pivot to the, to the officer enhancements, just to give you food for thought on that as well. Even if you said yes all forward, like January, I'm not going to get them all in January. So there's, there's opportunity there for, you know, phasing this in along the way. I'm very attuned to that. I get it, I know it. I just, if I don't have this conversation with you, I'm not serving, first of all, serving the city like I need to. I'm also not serving my staff like I need to.
Right.
And I want you to consider those police officers that are being told to come in on their, on their days off. And it just sucks a lot when I have to do that.
Well, and the other, my hope with this is hopefully by getting these two who are dedicated to the issue of people experiencing homelessness and helping those, hopefully it also relieves some of the calls and volume that your general.
And it will, it, it will, but you know.
I know it's not going to be one for one.
Yeah, it's kind of like when you, when you, when you open up an onion, you've got other layers you've got to work through. And we don't know what those look like until we open the onion.
It could make more.
Yes.
I mean, yeah.
There's some crying along the way.
Yes, there is some crying along the way with the onion.
Well, thank you, chief.
Any more, I mean.
We still have a couple more budgets to talk about.
Yeah, ninety-one percent of his budget is personnel.
Ninety-seven.
Oh, you know, you added vehicles.
Yeah, personnel and vehicles.
Well, this is true, this is true.
You got to do vehicles last year, so.
Every year we get them. So moving on to the, and this is more educational, I think, for some of you that you may or may not know, but as it relates to animal care budget, which is on page eighty-five?
Eighty, yeah.
Eighty-five, eighty-six. This is really more contract-driven. I can tell you in my previous life, I, I ran an animal control bureau and we do not want one. It's very expensive and it's, it is, requires a lot of labor. We contract with the Humane Society. We pay them, this past year, we paid them a hundred and five thousand dollars a year to help us with, with our animal calls. They will, they will manage any impoundments that we have to do with animals. We also work with them on, on doing investigations as it relates to animal complaints. We use their expertise. And we have a two and a half percent increase on our last contract with them. And this is simply funding the increase that we've done year after year.
Chief, I've got to hit the road here, but I do have one, I think it's a fairly important question in regards to the animal situation. We all remember, we visited the firework, firecracker situation.
Yep.
And whatever we can do there and just to help that situation. I did have an email contact with Lawrence regarding the animals. And another thing I'm tired of hearing is these people that are mistreating animals. And I wouldn't even mention what they're doing. So my question to the attorney was, are we doing the most that we can? Can, can, can we find these people more? What do we have, what do you have in your jurisdiction? What does the council have in its jurisdiction? You know, if your officers find someone that's mistreating an animal or they go out and on a complaint and they find this happening, I want to string these people up.
Well, we, we have ordinances, we also have, have laws on, on the books that we can enforce. And we do that. We have the ability to do that. Mind you, we also have to do a complete investigation and we have to prove it. So there, there are allegations, you know, animals are, they strike a passionate tone with, with everybody. But what is bad for some may not rise to the level of a criminal problem in, in the eyes of the law. You know, if you, simplest thing is you see somebody that has a dog in their car, absent high heat, where the dog could die in the car, in, in the state of Wisconsin, that's not considered animal abuse. Sometimes that's just your partner and you've got the window cracked and they're hanging out in the car with you. That is one example. In the wintertime, we, we see that. I mean, it just happens. But if, if somebody has a complaint about something that's going on, we'll investigate it. Our CSOs go out and investigate it, our officers will help our CSOs, and we'll investigate every complaint that comes in. That's a part of, of that fifty-some odd thousand calls for service I talked about that we, that we handle.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I understand that there are the degrees of whatever it is and then, but does an officer have any jurisdiction over the cat or the dog or whatever that's in a, in a vehicle in a parking lot?
Yes. Animal cruelty.
Okay. So I would imagine they're assessing if the animal is panting or just about dead, that's, what type of ticket can we hand out? What's the, what are the minimum, kind of like the fireworks? What are the minimum, what are the maximums?
Well, we, we can, we can issue an ordinance ticket for minor stuff, but if, if it, if it warrants referring them over for criminal charges, we'll refer them to the district attorney's office for animal cruelty charges.
So then it would be the DA's responsibility or determination.
To actually file the charges. We, we, just like anything, if there's a, if there's a corresponding statute on the books, we refer those charges to the district attorney's office. It's up to the district attorney to decide whether they're going to actually charge somebody.
Does the DA take his or her determination on what to charge based on state law?
I'm not going to speak to what the DA's decision-making process.
But I mean, do they draw upon?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's a piece of it.
I guess that's where I was going.
Yeah, that's a piece of it. But if we, if we took discretion away on everything that came our way, whether it be, whether it be something our police officers do or the district attorney's office does, we would be handcuffing the whole system because the system would bog down. There's just way too many things out there. And there's a lot of variables. Just as I shared with you on, on our homeless complaints, seven percent of those involve actual enforcement action. That's because the officers are actually making good decisions on the street and maybe they're, maybe they're diverting to some other resource on an animal complaint, on an animal call. It may be a diversion where just education needs to occur. But we're going to work with the, with the Humane Society to provide that training if possible. But hear me out, if an animal is being abused, we're going to refer those charges to the DA's office. If, if abuse is that I just didn't have enough money to, to buy all the food that I needed, that's different. But if somebody is abusing an animal and they can be charged, we're going to refer them over.
Thank you very much.
Chief, anything else with either your animal control or crossing guards budget?
No, not at all. Just to get on the crossing guards budget, we're responsible for all the crossing guards across the state, or across the city, rather. And we fund that and we review those annually to see if we're still being as, as impactful as we can with the school crossing guard positions. But, and we also have our auxiliary budget as well. But that's very small, that's a.
Recruit, recruit.
Excuse me?
Recruit, recruit, recruit.
Recruit, 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 yes.
We need people.
We need people.